Call me in order. Start with the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next regularly scheduled meeting is Friday, December, January 10th, 2020, at 9:00 a.m. at the Community Center, 35 Hard Edge Water Drive, Sebring, Florida. Please silence or turn off your cell phones. Consent agenda. Members of the Board have supervised a regular meeting held Friday, November 16th, 15th, and a special meeting held Tuesday, December 3rd. Today's report involves financials from September 30th to October 31st, 2019.
Motion approved.
Second.
You have a motion of second and a discussion from the Board?
Yeah, I have a couple of que-- I-- wait a minute. I had a couple of questions before we approved and just, I needed some clarification on stuff. It was, uh, on the golf financials for October. Oh, there's nobody here. Right? Well, I'll go on the record with it. With the golf financials--
They're gonna be here. I just, um, any questions you have, we'll get back to you on that. If Omar and I can't answer those this morning.
Okay. You want me to tell you what they are?
Yes, please.
The golf financials in October, uh, the company T-Off Temps was paid, uh, about And it was in, it was four checks. And I was just curious that it would be that much for temporary help on the golf course. It's under maintenance. That's one question. The other question I had was, and that's in the October report, on page, well, let's see. This, and this may run, they may run together, uh, on the golf financials for September, the total maintenance, uh, total maintenance and landscaping labor was $111,000 for the And the plan, the variance to the budget, well, the variance to last year was, it was $55,000 more than last year. And I can't for the life of me remember a bunch of work being done on the golf course in September. So I was curious as to what that was. Those are the two questions I had on the financial report.
Okay, we'll get back to you.
Okay.
Any public comment? Chrisy?
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hotelling?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
I guess yes with right answers or with answers? Yes, once I get to answers? Yes?
President Branson?
Yes. Okay, action agenda. Speed bump and traffic analysis workshop. Drew, Mike, you taking the lead on this?
We, um, contacted all the, um, uh, people who sent petitions in, which you asked us to do, and I think a lot of them are here today. We've got prices on everything that, um, that they asked to get done. Drew and I and George were working on it. Um, uh, we have the areas that, uh, we want to do. We have prices that we need, you know, if you want to know any prices. We just gotta, uh, what we need is direction from you is where to go. I mean, we had a traffic study, we know where we need them, and we have all the areas that we want to do. Um, Drew? Yeah, we'll do a brief recap on this.
I'm sorry, have you gone over this with the people who sent the petitions in? I don't--
Well, I thought that's why, why, uh, why Neil wanted to bring them here today, right?
Oh, we're gonna do that now?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I'm gonna do a brief recap of, uh, previous board discussions on what we decided to do or what we recommend to do on each of the locations that the petitions came in from. Um, we got a petition, um, these are roughly in order because some of them we've already addressed. Um, the first petition that we haven't addressed is Cortez Boulevard. Um, they were, they were complaining of speeding and they, they requested, they requested some, uh, speed bumps or humps or speed tables. Um, it's not our recommendation at this time to put in actual speed bumps. Our, our traffic engineer recommended, um, some alternate, uh, methods of speed calming, which were like pavement markings, specific pavement markings, like writing the speed limit in the actual road, um, doing alternate paved markings on the side of the road or even striping at a double lane. Um, that's what we're recommending to do in this area. Um, go ahead. Yeah, on Cortez, um, Sunrise Drive, um--
Can I make a recommendation to make this easier on us?
Yes.
Why don't we take them one at a time and if there's somebody here representing the petition, have them up here and say, "This is what I'm thinking of doing for you," and hear what they have to say.
Okay.
That might make it easier.
All right.
We start with Cortez then? Anyone-- Cortez? Anybody here with the Cortez petition? Go to the next one. We'll do, if they're not here, we'll do them last.
Okay. Um, this is Sunrise Drive is the next. They requested, I believe, two locations for, uh, speed bumps or speed cushions. Um, we are proposing to put in an initial first set of speed cushions. Um, is anyone from the Sunrise area? Would you--
Is this one location?
Right now, we're proposing one location.
Okay.
Of the location of the speed cushion, or the-- What's the, on the, if you, if you're on Sunrise, it's a complete loop, but if you take your first right, it would be the, that north, northerly stretch, east and west is where we're, where we're proposing to put it.
Well, uh, my--
What's your name?
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
My name is Mark Martin. 2328 Sunrise Drive. I've been a resident there for over 25 years. Uh, the original petition of the homeowners that we gathered, um, earlier this year, uh, actually had two sections of Sunrise. The furthestmost westerly north-south run where I live, and some of that is wooded and undeveloped still, and then, of course, the area that I believe you're speaking of, the, uh, east-west northernmost--
Correct.
--section. Essentially, those are both straightaways, and that's where cars really pick up speed. And, um, again, since this originally came up early in the year and there's been this traffic studying, it's been, uh, publicized in the paper, and I believe, uh, there was a, uh, a notice came out to all the residents in Sunland Lake about something possibly speed bumps were going to be done. Uh, I know in Manor Hill, our newsletter or our, uh, president, uh, sent out a mailing and it addressed speed bumps or potential speed bumps. Uh, that's, seems to have passed, and I think it probably, unfortunately, I should say, unfortunately, a lot of the, a lot of the perpetrators are residents. Some are my neighbors. It really disappoints me that people fail to understand the, uh, danger in driving 45 to 55 in a 25 mile an hour zone, but, um, since this initial discussion came up and it was publicized, as I said, uh, now, there's been a period of time and it seems like these people say, "Well, nothing's gonna be done, so let it, let it rip." You know, "I'm really gonna fly down Sunrise. I'm gonna," you know, whoever did that petition or whoever, you know, proposed speed bumps, "Well, I'm gonna let them know, nobody's gonna stop me. I'm really gonna tear my butt down Sunrise Drive." And I'll tell you, the other day I saw a car, it must've been going 80 miles an hour. Another one going probably 70. And I'm not exaggerating. And you get these, uh, uh, landscape people with a four-wheel drive pickup pulling a 30, 25-foot enclosed trailer, and they're going 60? That's like a freight train going by. And God forbid, if you're walking, walking your pet, jogging, riding a bike, it's a serious problem, and that's what, uh, you know, of approximately, uh, 60 homes in the area that I've described, uh, the two section of Sunrise, our petition, we had, um, there's, I, I think, about 54 homes, excuse me. We have, we, we got 34 signatures, and a lot of people are part-time residents that weren't here at the time. Uh, some homes were vacant, some were being built, um, and of course, some are perpetrators, and we didn't even bother to ask them to sign. So I think, um, it demonstrates that the residents of that, at least that two sections of Sunrise, agree that there is a problem and want speed bumps. And, uh, and I hope there's gonna be speed bumps, and I'm a little disappointed, you just started to say, "Well, we're gonna put one speed bump."
That's, our, our intent is to start with one, verify that it is working, and as long as it's working, we, we do plan on, as we get permission, we're gonna put a second one in. I don't know what the time period between the two, but we intend to do it soon thereafter if we get funding and okay to do it.
Well, I, I would initially like to see at least two on, on, on the two sections that are in question, or at least--
I think you have to keep in mind that this is somewhat experimental. We're using a different cushion or a different speed bump than we've used before, so we wanna get experience with those and measure the effectiveness before we spend the money double.
Okay. But that, that offers, you know, and I'm just one of many. It offers me no protection on the section I live on. You know, I don't, I quit riding my bike because I'm afraid to. I'm afraid to walk down Sunrise during the day. It's so bad. And I, I encourage any of you to come and park your car and sit in my driveway between eight and nine in the morning, four and five at night, and even anytime during the day, and you'll see. And it's not an exaggeration, and I think this petition tells you that. So--
What, what speed are the speed cushions, is that like 10 mile an hour, 20 mile an hour? What are they?
I think they're 20 to 25 mile an hour.
So these are like flat?
Uh, well, they have a hump.
They're like the ones on, uh, the one on Granada that's permanent, just like that?
Yes.
Like a little bird?
Correct. They're shaped more like that, so they're less abrupt when you just run over them. It's not gonna be, uh, just an immediate--
How much were the ones that we did on the Tansas?
The speed bumps, uh, they were $1,200 apiece.
So they're cheaper?
They're cheaper, right. But they're a little more severe when you hit them. At least this, I mean, if you have any, like an ambulance or a police car, you know, it's, it's, uh, you know, they're, uh, they're kinda set up more for them also, you know. But these will definitely slow people down, so.
So why, why, I'm, sorry, one more question. Why wouldn't we do the, the ones that really slow them down that are half-price?
They're, they're technically not recommended for use in public roadways. They're more for parking lots. Now, yeah, the speed bumps. So we, we're, we don't recommend putting them on the roads, but that's, that's why we're trying to transition to either speed hump or speed cushion.
Well, is there a speed hump that, that will, that is 10 miles an hour? I mean, is, is there a bigger speed hump available?
Yes.
Yeah, I believe, I believe you can get taller ones.
But the speed limit was 25 there, so we tried to, you know, try to keep them at the speed they're supposed to be going, so.
You know, not, I mean, my personal point of view, none of this money's in the budget, so if I want to do it, I'd give them two.
Well, my, my point would be that what we're trying to do is look for alternatives to putting speed bumps all through Sunland Lake, and we're trying a number of traffic calming activities, one of which is the speed cushions. But given what you're saying about the speeding, one of the other things we're doing is bringing the sheriff in more often, and I'm wondering if we can't get the sheriff scheduled for some time on Sunrise during the times he recommended.
I'll check on that. Yes, sir.
Could I just interrupt at this point? And I appreciated the, the effort to get the deputies to patrol Sunland Lake, and I've seen several on, uh, over the past several months, several on, um, Sunland Lake Boulevard. But all summer and, and from, from the, from the start of this, and I, and I'm out quite a bit, uh, I'm retired and, uh, as Mike Hurley will tell you, I seem to get around. I've got the former pet of the administrative, administrative offices, but, um, only one time since the announcement that there were gonna be beefed up deputy patrols, only one time, and it was a rainy Sunday afternoon in July, did I see a deputy parked on the side of the road in Manor Hill. One time. Now, Sunday, two in the afternoon when it's pouring down rain, I, I don't think a whole lot of people are out, let alone speeding. I was sort of disappointed with that. And, um, you know, all I can say is, you know, somebody is gonna get hurt or somebody's gonna get killed on Sunrise where I, you know, the area that I'm describing. I can't speak for the rest of Manor Hill, but I can for where I live and, and for the other stretches of Sunrise. Somebody is, is gonna get hit or killed. So I would like to see at least two speed bumps on both of those sections. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave Halbig, resident. I live on Sunrise, and I, Mark did a great job. A couple of points I'd like to make. I went around and helped collect names for this petition, especially the people with children. They were so elated to hear that we were maybe gonna get something to slow people down. Uh, people walk their dogs along the side of the road, there's no, there's no walkway. Uh, it's really bad. The, uh, the point that Neil was talking about, about trying to keep speed bumps away from the whole community, uh, I just happened to be at a, at a golf community yesterday called the Meadows in Sarasota, and it probably two or three miles before you get to the clubhouse where the golf course is, when you first pull off, I think it's University Drive, there's speed bumps throughout the whole community. You hit one right away as you come in, and they're everywhere. And we gotta do something. We, pardon?
Do you know what the speed limit is in that community?
It's 25, 30 miles an hour, I think. Uh, I can't remember seeing a speed sign, but, uh, obviously--
My experience is usually when there's speed bumps everywhere, the speed limit is usually closer to 15.
No, it wasn't, it was not 50. It was not 50 because of golf cart traffic going across the road.
15.
Pardon?
15, 15.
Oh, yeah. I, I, it, it probably was higher than that. Anyway, um, the, uh, we just had another mailbox destroyed on Sunrise the other, the other night. I mean, it, I don't know, I don't know if anybody caught the, caught the person, it had to just basically destroy it, because those are big, heavy, robust, uh, boxes, and it, it completely knocked the whole thing down, busted up the, and, uh, so it's, you gotta be really, really careful, uh, especially with the service trucks and the, the road's not very wide, and you just gotta be careful, but something needs to be done there and probably all over the community to slow this down. And like Mark said, as far as the sheriff, I mean, he comes in there, he's gonna park where people can see him. I don't know how many tickets they've written. I doubt very much because I, I've never, I've never seen anybody pull over. Tanya, uh, do you have, uh, do they send you a report?
Yes, sir.
And, uh, tickets for running stop signs and speeding and those kinds of things? How many, uh, how many have they written?
Yeah, I have a, a report that I sent to the board a couple of months ago, so they're doing update. Um, it's not very many tickets, um, mostly warnings that they've issued, um, but I do have all those stats.
Yeah. Well, okay, anyway, that's, uh, that's all I have to say about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Scott Sumrell. I live at 3109 Sunrise. Um, speed bumps, I, I don't disagree with Mark at all that we have a huge problem as far as speeding on Sunrise, because I stand in front of my house, people go by 60, 70 miles an hour. It's ridiculous in a 25 mile an hour zone. But there are other issues to the speed bumps too that have to be considered. When you ever you put up the speed bump, then what is it, about 40 feet in front of it, you have to have signs on both sides with those obnoxious yellow things that said, "There's a speed bump coming," and obviously on the other side as well. So you've got these signs now up all over in addition to the speed bumps. I would love to slow the traffic down, but frankly, I've worked very hard on my yard, and I don't really want one of those yellow posts in the front of it. Uh, what I was a huge supporter of was, uh, when Dan was still on the board, when you guys were having the off-duty police officers come in. The only thing I did not agree with that is they were giving so many warning tickets. This is a big issue, not just in Sunland Lake, it's all of Highlands County. My name is known by Sheriff Blackman because I've accused him of, you know, "We need to slow the traffic down." He's like, "No, we don't. I don't want to be known as a speed trap town." And I'm like, "Well, I would much rather have people hit Sebring sign and say, 'Ooh, I gotta slow down,' instead of, 'Hey, I can go through at 80 or 90.'" The reality is, all through Highlands County, people are driving 60, 70, 80 miles an hour, and they never get a ticket, and they never get stopped. I think one of the biggest ways that we can stop it in Sunland Lake is to bring the off-duty police officers back in, but issue tickets. Uh, when Dan was still here, he gave me a copy of the report, and it was, you know, uh, warning after warning after warning. I think we are way beyond warnings. I mean, the example, when I was with Sheriff Blackman, he gave the lady a warning, driving 70 miles an hour and 27, she's got her kid in the backseat putting on makeup, and her comment to them when they pulled her over to give her a warning ticket was, "Well, now my kid's gonna be late for school." Uh, speeding in, in Highlands County is just, it's endemic, and it's, uh, it really needs to be slowed down. But looking at Sunland Lake, I would support a few of the, the, and I am president of the board, by the way, in Manor Hill. I would support, and I think the rest of the board would, a few of the speed, um, I would prefer the speed bumps rather than the, so if you're where, you know, you can knock the bottom of your car off. Uh, but again, we need to be careful where we're putting them, where the signage is going to be. See, I would very much like someone from Manor Hill, if you do decide to move ahead with that, be involved in where you're actually going to be placing them. Uh, so we'd ask that.
Didn't you guys in the petition put where you wanted them, or did I miss that?
Uh, Mark Mayhem, I don't know. Did you specifically put where you want? No, I don't think they specifically, yeah. I don't think it was specific where they wanted it. Um, I think they've talked about it after that fact, because I know, you know, where Mark is, that's another straightaway, and, and they do get a lot of speeders there, and that would be a good place for one. But again, you know, you gotta be cognizant of where those signs are gonna go to, so. We'd just like to, you know, if you do move ahead with those, we'd prefer the speed cushions, uh, like when you go over on Granada there, you have the permanently installed one. That is a little bit easier than that new hard rubber thing that really, you know, you gotta slow down to 10 miles an hour. Speed bumps are good, but you gotta be careful with them. When I moved here from Delray Beach, a child was killed in one of our communities, which is terrible. But they overreacted and they put speed bumps every 30 feet. And that was great, except it then took the people like 25 minutes to get to their house when you come in the front gate, and it was, really came to light when a guy had a heart attack there, and they had to, "There's a fire truck." They can't go over those things, so it took them almost 20 minutes just to get back to the house. So you have to be careful with them. But, um, if that's the only alternative we have, then certainly we could look at a couple in some way.
Well, I, I think one of the other alternatives we can look at there is we're, we're getting a, a traffic sign that reports your speed and keeps track of the, the details, so we would have a report as to how fast, how many cars were going in that area.
That would be good, because I think you would be quite shocked to see how they're zipping down that street. And I agree with Mark that if people have kids, have to be worried. I like to walk, ride my bike, and they go flying by. It's crazy, but, uh, unfortunately, several of the people I see speeding by have their kids sitting in the backseat, and they're going by, you know, 50 miles an hour. So it's not just people that don't have kids, it's just in general, so, thank you.
While, while you're there, let me ask you a question. Um, the current proposal is to put speed cushions in in that one area. Are you okay with that as a, a test? And then we'll see what else we can do besides the sign and, and maybe add cushions later?
Absolutely, yes. I mean, I'd do anything to slow it down. I've talked to people, I, if I thought it would help, I'd lay in the street, but I'd stay just run over it--
Yeah, probably wouldn't help.
Because when they're doing 60, 70 miles an hour, they don't care who's there. And I firmly believe the only way you're really gonna, you know, someone doing 70, and that includes the landscapers and that, they gotta get a ticket, and it's gotta be a big ticket. No, and no more warnings, you know. I gotta see them get a ticket that's gonna cost them, you know, four or 500 bucks, and maybe that'll get their attention, so.
So I'd like to make a decision today on what we're gonna do, but I think you guys need to talk and, uh, do a sidebar and decide what you would like for us to consider.
Well, I know that Mark definitely wants one by his house, and I--
He says two, you say one. I'd like to know what you guys want, so we can make a decision.
I have no problem with you putting in two, I'd just like to be involved when you make the decision where you're gonna put them. I know Mark wants one by him, but again, I, I've, Mike, got to make sure that Mark understands that wherever you put that, 40 feet, is it 40 feet or 50 feet? I don't know whether there's exactly, but wherever you have them, you've got these obnoxious yellow signs now that say, "There's a speed bump ahead." And you're gonna have that going both ways.
Well, would--
I don't want one of those.
You guys say you're afraid somebody's gonna get killed, but you don't want the signs to be in anybody's way where they can see. You guys gotta get your act together, otherwise I don't know why we even consider you. I mean, if, we'd love to help you, but I'd love to know what you want, and you guys--
And again, we said we'd like two speed bumps. I just wanna be involved where you're going to put them. That's all. And so, 'cause you can't, you, are you familiar with Sunrise? You know exactly where you're gonna put them today, or is this something that Mike and them have to discuss?
I probably would've taken the guidelines that you gave us in your ride of, which you don't seem to recollect where you wanted them.
I, and that was not my proposal, that was Mark's. But in it--
Well, it came from Sunrise, it came from, you guys all signed it. I mean, it's a petition from Sunrise. That's the information we have.
Okay. And again, and I will say it for the third time now, two speed bumps that they just discussed over here are fine, but I would like Manor Hill to be involved with exactly where you want to put them. I don't think that's too much to ask. Thank you.
So at this time, do we wanna make any decisions on how many we wanna propose, or just--
We can't do that in a workshop.
Okay, okay.
We're not, oh, so we're not deciding today?
No, we can decide when we go back into the regular meeting. We can't do it in a workshop.
So after the workshop, we can go back and go meeting?
We can today, Ray, but it's gotta be--
Oh, we still can do it?
Okay.
Okay.
So, um, we'll go on to the next one then?
Yeah.
Okay. Cantoria, is anyone here from Cantoria? Yep.
Good morning. I'm Sharon Havener, and I live in Unit 5 on Cantoria for 32 years. Um, if it's one speed bump, that's not gonna do us much good. I'm in the center of the street, and it's not a very long street, Cantoria. All of the ABC streets are not very long streets, but boy, they really do rev it up on the street, and that makes it even more dangerous for some reason. And we do get a lot of walkers and a lot of, um, well, in fact, there's two little girls that drive every day their little scooter down the road, and I'm always thinking, "Oh, God, I hope that red car doesn't go by." But we need at least two speed bumps. And another idea I had, I wonder if it'll be passable, would be no through traffic on the ABC streets because they don't, they shouldn't have to. There's a road over by the retention ponds, they're supposed to come down Granada, go down that road to get on Schumacher, but they cross through our small streets, A, B, C, D, E, whatever. C Street seems to get, to me, the majority of the people. I don't know why. It's just the way it comes off and, and into it. But it is, has been, and will probably continue until we do something, be a very dangerous situation. There's two other gentlemen on the street that were gonna come today to support this, but they had to work. And there's, everybody on the street is for this. Two speed bumps, okay, but I do think to consider, uh, no through traffic on these streets, and they have to go where they should go, down to the end, retention pond and, and down to Schumacher. Now, I don't know if they would adhere to that. Um, the security, the sheriff's department, I was very disappointed in that. Of all the months that we've had them, I've seen one sitting on right on Granada where everybody can see him and slow down real quick, and I even stopped and talked to him and told him I was really glad to see him there, but that was months ago. The only ones I see are the ones going home that live there. So I'm not impressed with the sheriff's department's security at all. I don't know where they are. I don't know if they're over in Manor Hill or, but Unit 5 doesn't have them, I'll tell you that right now. Um, so that's, that's my idea, at least two speed bumps. One, I don't think it's gonna do a darn thing, because there'll be just enough speed to, you know.
When, when you talk about no through traffic, are you talking about closing off the end at Granada, or?
No, at the end of each of the small streets. You know, they don't need to go through there, the people that live there, of course, but The people that live there, of course, but they don't need to cut through there when there's, there's two other ways, and down Cortez and then down the main way.
See, but I take your street all the time.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Are you the red car?
Absolutely. I'm not gonna tell you my car.
Are you on the motorcycle?
I'm not gonna acknowledge what kind of car I have. I don't wanna get in more trouble than I am. But I do, I live on Matanzas, and I take your street all the time.
Yeah, oh, you're on Matanzas. See, those are the, yes, everybody from there comes over and makes that shortcut.
I think, I think putting a, and you can't take, you know, you can't make the turn or you can't take your street, it'll never happen.
Why?
I don't even know if it's legal.
Why?
Because you can drive through it. You can't say, you can't put up a, how did you call it again?
No through traffic.
No through traffic? I don't think that's gonna work.
To me, it makes sense, especially when they have two other ways to get, to get...
But there's a way in and a way out, so I don't know how you put no through traffic. It's just a street within Sunland Lake, so I don't think that would necessarily work.
I'm just trying to figure out a way to slow down or divert.
The street's not that long. One speed bump will probably be a good...
I don't, oh, no. One, and Dennis wanted three.
Ma'am, ma'am, we don't know how effective these are gonna be. And we're trying to put, proposing to put one in each of the trouble areas and measure the effect. If, if we put one in the middle and decide we need to do a second one, they're movable. So keep in mind that this is somewhat of an experiment. And at twenty-five hundred bucks apiece, we don't wanna...
I'd rather see two of the cheaper ones, one on, take one of the other.
These are the cheaper ones.
No, no, you're not. These are twenty-six, twenty-seven. The other ones were twelve-hundred.
The, the speed tables are sixteen-hundred dollars. You're right.
Yeah.
And we're not proposing to put any of those in anywhere. So...
So we're just, we're just gonna sit and wait and wait and wait and wait and see what...
Again, we're proposing to put one in and measure the effectiveness, same as we are on Sunrise, the same as we are in the locations that need help.
Yeah. Well, I'm hoping that Unit Five will be recognized and something will be done.
We do recognize your problem, believe me.
George Puffenberger, resident. I can tell you Cantoria has been an issue. I've lived here twenty-six years. And when we put the back entrance and the cut-through road, it was done primarily because of people who lived on Cantoria complaining about the through traffic, like Supervisor Brooks says it's convenient. He takes that. Those are eighteen-foot wide streets, all the ABC streets from Almeria as far as Mendoza. They're poorly maintained. There's not on the roads repair list. There's a lot of children on those streets. I'm not in favor of speed bumps that you have on Matanzas, but I think sometimes they're a necessary evil. And I think the ones on Matanzas are well-placed. Matanzas has no sidewalks, Cantoria has no sidewalks, and they're both highly traveled with pedestrians, especially in Matanzas. As I said, I'm always opposed to speed bumps. I like speed tables or speed cushions. I'm not familiar with speed cushions. I'm familiar with speed tables. You can go over a speed table twenty, twenty-five miles an hour, and it does knock the fillings out of your teeth. A speed bump go over twenty-five miles an hour, you realize you just knocked your transmission out of your, unlucky. But Cantoria is a continuing problem. The lady's right. It's been that way for twenty-six years. You need to understand, if you drive, your speed is just that simple. You can't control human nature. There's a gentleman from Manor Hill said while ago, between the hours of, what, seven-thirty to nine o'clock, they see speeding. Between the hours of four and six, that's people going and coming to work. If you're running late, you're gonna try to make it up on the road. So I agree with the speed, the speed calming devices. We even looked one time on making the ABC streets one-way, one-way east, one-way north and south. That was shot down because of the, got a lot of pushback by the yard people, who now somehow have trailers as long as eighteen-wheelers that come in and block the streets. I don't know the answer, because you can't prohibit them. But the other issue that's a continuing problem is the area between Granada Boulevard on Cortez and Orunda or Orguna. I like Orunda better. That is heavily populated on both sides. There's no sidewalks. There's an enormous amount of kids out there. So if there's any areas I would support, putting the speed bumps, that as the president said, you can move a speed bump, you take it up, move it. When I worked in Brazil, they had speed bumps everywhere. They moved them like every two weeks, so you couldn't anticipate where they were. And they're highly effective. I'm sure there's liabilities whatever you do, speed bumps, speed tables, or speed cushions. One question, what, what's a speed cushion made out of?
The ones we're looking at, they're made out of, I believe it's recycled rubber. It's very similar to the speed bumps that are put on Matanzas. It's very similar material.
What's the dimensions of them? I know you said they didn't cover the entire, the entire side of the road.
Do we have an illustration we can put on the screen?
Yeah, that's a good, I'd like to see one.
We did have one. On our, one of the proposals we got, it's, it's six foot, six inches wide and six foot, eight inches long.
Six foot, eight inches long.
Yeah. So they're, they mimic the speed tables or speed humps we already have, but they have, they're not as wide, so emergency vehicles can straddle them.
Right, bypass it.
Yeah.
Have you seen those in use before?
I have not seen them locally or in person, but there's been a lot of information. We were doing research on these.
Is the price similar to a speed table?
They're, you can actually, the ones that we're looking at buying, you can, they're modular, so they're built in pieces that bolt down, and you can actually turn it into a speed table if you wanted to. So it's, it's the same...
You're gonna add a piece and make it a table rather than a...
Yeah, instead of putting an end cap and putting a brake in it, you could make it continuous if you wanted to. And that's, that's another thing...
Rubber, I wanted to have a guarantee with them.
Yes, yeah, ten-year.
Really? Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Anyone else from that area?
Next is Cremona, and I guess I'm gonna be the one to talk about Cremona. John Harrison was supposed to be here. His mother, I think, passed away last night's way to leave, and, and Jugs, Jugs had a doc's appointment. Basically, we're saying the same thing as everyone else did. We need two speed bumps. We have the locations where we feel we need them. I've got a couple ladies in here that walk their dogs and, and walk a lot today, and I get complaints every day about the speeders on Cremona. We asked for another, we pulled that off, off the table, but we feel that we really need the two speed bumps on Cremona. It's a pass-through, and it goes from the school, the hospital, into Sunland Lake, and people speed. But there's one thing I will say, I do support having the sheriffs here. I think we have seventy, seventy-eight miles here. That's a pretty big area to cover. They can't be everywhere. So from where I sit as a resident and my job, I, I think the sheriff's department have done a pretty good job. I mean, it's better, but you're not gonna get everybody, but I think the speed cushions is really gonna help, help the areas that, that we're talking about. So, I mean, I'm, I'm hoping we can put, put two in, two on Cremona and two on Sunrise also.
If the speed cushions don't work, do we have any options? Do we just eat them? Can we trade them in for something else? I don't, I mean, if we decide, if we try to...
We can convert them into a speed hump or a speed table. We can move them around, yes.
No, no, no. I mean, if, if, if we try these speed humps, well, speed cushions...
Speed cushions, yeah.
And they don't work, and we decide six months from now we wanna do speed bumps.
We just pick them up and take them out.
We have to eat it though, right? The cost? Or do we have, or are there any options?
I'm sure there'd be other places, I mean, it's...
Yeah, I mean, I mean, anything's gonna help us, you know?
I think that's the point.
I mean, you know, like Joe said, you know, this is kind of a test area we're trying to do right now. You know, we're addressing people speeding, and, and I think that's why we're all here today. You know, we just wanna make Sunland Lake safer for people to walk, people to drive, you know, the kids, and that's all we're asking for.
But to Ray's point, these are gonna do something. These are gonna slow people down to an extent.
Exactly, Joe.
We just don't know what that is, so to say we're gonna eat the cost, I mean, anywhere we put them, they're gonna help.
Exactly.
If they're not severe enough, then we go back to something different.
If this is truly a test, which I don't know if I'm in agreement with that concept, why don't we pick one of them and put speed bumps in, and one of them and put speed cushions in, and see what happens?
We have experience with the bumps. We know what they do.
I'm sorry?
We have experience with the bumps on your street. We know what they do.
Well, they work.
Yeah.
Well, but we're not...
But we are, but Ray, we also have complaints about the speed bumps. They're, they're too severe. So what we did is we went, went the other option, and our research just, so we wanted to try these. I think these will work. Anything we do, we're buying a sign, okay? That's gonna help. We have the sheriff's department, and that does help. I mean, and I understand, people, you know, they can't be everywhere, and, you know, and, and a lot of people aren't supporting it. But the sheriff's department have, they have helped us, but...
I guess, Mike, the only question, my only thought is, I, we're doing something that works for twelve-hundred and fifty dollars, but we're gonna experiment with something that we're not sure about for twenty-five-hundred.
That may work better with...
Well, I mean, way, bro, everybody, I think on Matanzas is happy. I mean, everybody with the speed bumps, I believe...
They don't drive fire trucks and ambulances either, and that's the advantage to these.
They said six seconds. That's all we're talking about, is six seconds.
Per bump.
Per bump. So it's twelve seconds on Matanzas.
And I agree with that, Ray, but, but at least we're trying to address this for everyone, you know, the whole Sunland Lake also.
Okay, I just thought I'd bring it up.
I mean, you know, I mean, people are asking, you know, to slow it down. We hired the sheriff's department. It's helped, it's helped, and it hasn't helped a hundred percent, but nothing's gonna help a hundred percent.
I agree. We're all in agreement, we need to do something. I'm not saying...
And that's all we're asking. I think this whole room, everybody in this room is asking, you know, it's their neighborhoods, okay? They live there. I got Sally, and I hope Sally's gonna come, get up and talk, because she lives right on one of the areas, you know, and, and she'll tell you. I was at a place the other night, and a car went by, we had, we were standing, standing, standing right by a security truck, and they went flying by. I stand, I've been doing forty miles an hour, and that's a corner. So alls we're asking, what we're asking for is, is let's, let's at least begin here, all right? We're asking for four, three or four areas, and, and I think everybody in this room, what they're asking for. I know there's a couple other people in this room that are looking for some other areas, but the petition hasn't come in on those areas yet. But we have to start somewhere.
Okay, I need to...
Thank you.
I need to go back to your comments on Cremona, and have you put your preserve hat on, because you said you want two on Cremona. But the petition identifies one on Cremona and one on Mandavia.
No, our petition was for two on Cremona. It was, um...
I'm looking at it.
Mandavia was the first one that, and we pulled that off, and then, and then Drew and I actually went and looked, we talked to the residents, and, and he just left because he had a doc's appointment, so that's what I called...
So this petition is not right? The addresses that are here aren't correct anymore?
One of them isn't right.
One of them's correct.
So, so, Sally, why don't you, I'm gonna ask Sally to stand up. She lives right there.
Stand up, Sally.
I am. Okay, I just wanna talk, I did the survey on my, my street. Every single person thought it was a wonderful idea, but don't put it in front of my house. I mean, that's what they said. And I said, well, we don't know where they would go, but if it's gonna be done, it's gonna be done where they feel it's needed, not because you don't want it. So that's what their, their opinion was. They don't want it on their property or near them. So, that's all.
So we'll put it in front of your house?
Why not? I have enough traffic there now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sally. Anyone else from Cremona, right?
So Cremona is still two, right?
Yes.
Just, we don't know for sure where they are?
Well, they're only, they're...
There's only one in this proposal.
The recommendation is one on Cremona.
Oh, you mean what, what these guys recommend?
Craig Herrick, resident on Cremona. I support not only the speed cushions, but I believe through the curves, if you would stripe that, that would keep people in the lane, and that automatically slows you down instead of cutting through on both sides. I don't think the striping would cost that much. I do see it's supposed to hold for future paving, but if they had to stay in their own lane, it would slow them down. So...
Thank you.
Speaking of striping, when we say striping, what exactly do we mean?
Depending on the location, a lot of these is double-yellow striping in the middle of the road for like Cremona, but it's thermoplastic. It's the stuff like they use on twenty-seven. It's one of the most permanent...
Are the roads wide enough that you can put double striping?
Yeah, it's just gonna be in the center of the road on that, that particular location. But yeah, it's, the width of the road is not as important as other things, but it's, it's fine to fit in there.
So we don't have the cost for the striping. What would it be? Is it worth doing it now and doing it again when we pave?
It would probably be between, now, this is a rough estimate, between three and four grand to do it, so that's why we didn't wanna do it twice, if we're gonna pave it next year or the following year. We were talking about considering doing it in-house, and that would be a lot, a lot less money. It would probably be less than five hundred dollars to do it in-house for just standard paint.
That's what I was gonna say, is there a way to just paint it temporarily?
Yeah.
Would like Craig and Sally to do it.
And what, for Cortez, oh, we've, we've done everybody by Cortez, right?
There is a lady from Cortez. She was a little late, and she asked if she could speak, so I guess...
Sally Mogul, four-one-zero-five, Cortez. I'm not, I missed the beginning, so I'm not sure what the striping and road markings, but we, we have a terrible, terrible speed going on down our road, and we have a lot of kids, one special needs. I mean, like everybody else has said, early in the morning and then late at night when everybody's going to and from work, there's one motorcycle, I can clock it right before six-thirty. The other day I watched, I was up, and so I watched him. The only reason he was probably going maybe thirty-five, forty miles an hour was because there was another car in front of him, but he flipped, you know, goes down there as fast as he can. It's just, and, and the kids are walking to school to catch the bus. The parents are with them most of the time, but there's little kindergarten, first-grade kids, and I was worried with them even walking, because there's no sidewalks, of course, and it's still dark, and they're trying to go down the road, and then these people are still dark, and they're trying to go down the road, and then these people are flying down the road, you know, to catch the, so I, I don't understand why we're not getting speed bumps or something, I don't know what the striping, striping, I don't get that, so I don't know what, what that is. Road markings, that, that's.
Uh, Drew?
Yeah.
What's road markings?
And, and this location, it would be double yellow striping down the whole length of the road, and we're gonna paint, for now, we're gonna paint the speed limit, and then how, how fast you're supposed to be going in the road.
And, and that's gonna cost almost $5,000?
Yes, the double yellow striping is, yeah, and it's thermoplastic the whole length of the road.
Why can't we just get a couple of speed bump?
It, it was not recommended at the time to do, to do speed bumps in that area.
Okay, when we first came to the, the board last spring, we asked for speed bumps, and then they suggested the sheriffs, which we thought was a great idea, um, I guess that really hasn't helped, we haven't seen them on our street when we've been there, um, but, you know, I, I, I think most of the people, we, we pretty much had, we had it 100%, I went to every house and got signatures, and every single house wanted something done about our road, and, um, I, I, I mean, for the cost, I don't see why we can't have speed bumps as well as the other, you know, the other streets. I don't, I really feel that that's what we need. I mean, I feel like that would slow people down. I know it slows people down on Matanzas, I go up and down Matanzas every day to come up here, and it slows me down if I would happen to start going faster, because they're, they're, they work, you know, people don't wanna wreck their car, but signs won't do any good. Okay.
Thank you.
George Puffenberger again, resident. I think you've heard from most of the speakers that the police either aren't writing sufficient tickets, but it's my idea they're parked in the wrong places. I think there, the areas that's been identified on this sheet is the areas they ought to concentrate on. I've seen them three times. Uh, twice was out on Ponce at the north entrance, about 500 yards in, where there's not a house than a mile. I saw one the other night parked off of, uh, Granada, almost to my street, Mendoza, and, you know, there's a stop sign for Cortez less than 40 feet away. So I think maybe a situation with our general manager, whomever converses with the police, would identify the problem areas, and say, that's where you need to concentrate. Uh, the lady's right on, on, uh, Cortez, I hear that same motorcycle out of the next street over, and that guy must go to work about 6:30, he must always be late, because he winds that thing up, and, uh, you don't need an alarm clock at 6:30. I'm not in favor of anything on boulevards, but from, as I said before, from Granada to Ortega, or, I mean, Orduna, that's a problem. Any other comments on Cortez? Okay, the speed sign says ordered, when's it gonna be delivered?
Six to eight weeks.
From when?
Uh, we ordered, um, I think last Thursday.
All right.
Okay, so.
What, you ordered last Thursday?
The speed sign.
Oh, the speed sign.
Any additional comments from the board?
Hi, what, what do you mean by from us?
Anything you wanna comment on here?
I've got a lot to say, I've heard everybody talk, so. Um, I wanna put, I, I happen to live on Matanzas, and what a difference when we put the speed bumps in. Uh, and there's been a few complaints, but I don't care that somebody has to slow down to go over their bump. Uh, I've enjoyed it, uh, 'cause now there are a few, there always will be, they speed between the signs, I think it's fun, I guess, but, uh, I've, I've been here four years, we spent a lot of money on a lot of things. I, I know this is a project that we wanna, that we wanna try, but I really am in favor for putting two signs for all these people, or two, or two bumps wherever these people want it, and get it over with, because it works, and I don't care if we put the speed bump. Uh, the Cantori is gonna be, because most of the people go there because they don't wanna come down Matanzas, and it's the quickest, it's the quickest street when you come off of that, that road. Uh, but me personally, I would like to put two with everybody that's here, on every road, and try them, and if we have to, maybe put three, but, uh, it, it, the money is not that mu, I mean, $2,600 for the money that we spend at this place, uh, to keep people safe, I, I, I really don't believe it's, uh, that big of a deal, uh, so I, I would be in favor of spending the money now, and I'm sure we can find it, and, and getting it, you know, 'cause I'm sure it's gonna, there's gonna be more, and we might have to put more spots, but I think we've been working on this for a year, and I, you know, I, I'm tired of these people not being taken care of. I happen to be, had my, and I don't think it had much to do with me being on the board, but I was very happy when we got the speed bumps on Matanzas, and so are all my neighbors, so I, I'd like to help them. I mean, I, I don't know what the board's gonna do, the majority, but I'm in favor of putting at least two on every place that's here, and it could be bumps or cushions, I don't care, but I, I wanna do that, so that's all, that's all I'll say, so.
My name is Forrest Bowling, I'm with the Fairway Villas Condominium Association, right over here on Edgewater Drive. Um, sorry I was late, but I see that, uh, our street is now, not on this list of places to have, uh, speed bumps, and yet we have severely passed people coming down Edgewater Drive all the way from Sunrise up to Manta here, and we've got one diesel truck guy that I think he don't try to put the foot and accelerate, and he's going 65 by the time he gets to Manta, and there's a lot of people at that dog park, you know, a lot of traffic stopping, letting people in and out of there, and yet they just come on by and they don't even care what's going on, so I think that, that Edgewater Drive should be added to this list.
The proposal that we are looking at was driven by, the locations were driven by petitions.
Okay.
There's been no petition for the location you're talking about.
Okay, very good.
I, I would like to thank everybody for making their comments, uh, clear, so that we've got a better understanding of your feelings. I think one of the things that I heard, uh, is in regards to the sheriff, and I think it would not be a bad thing for Sunland Lake to be known as a speed trap, uh, and I think we should be encouraging the sheriff, especially when they're here on our dime, that they should be writing tickets, not warnings.
Yes, sir, I've communicated that with the sheriff's office.
Okay, any other comments from the board? For the record, um.
Wait, something, something.
Wait a minute, we'll have public comment momentarily.
Sorry.
Thank you. For the record, I don't disagree with Mike Gilpin. The speed bumps are effective, we know they're effective, the cost is half, I do think this has the potential to be a better fix for the problem, but we won't find out till we try it. So I think this proposal makes sense, and if we come back in 30 days and say, these are just as effective, then we start looking at the second speed bump in each location, or whatever it is. Somehow we have to measure whether this is a good expenditure or whether it isn't, so, I mean, that's my feeling on this thing.
And I, I would, I would agree, I think the, the issue is, we clearly wanna make the road safer for everybody. We also want to eliminate some of the complaints and the issues with, uh, the wear and tear of these speed bumps and, and putting, you know, putting the 10 and 20 mile an hour tables in areas where the speed limit is 35 is not effective. If we need to look at speed limits, we can look at speed limits, but we've got a, a large area in Sunland Lake, and we're trying to find a better way to address the issues than just throwing speed bumps everywhere. And we, you know speed bumps, uh, which is why you want them, because you've seen they're effective, but we don't know that these other methods aren't effective, and we think they are, uh, and, they have the potential of being able to calm the traffic without, uh, being so disruptive to traffic, and in particular, um, emergency vehicles that are having to slow down for them, uh, or create problems if they don't.
All right, my turn? I guess. I don't know, you guys don't come to us very often asking for stuff, so I figured it's pretty serious if you think there's a problem. So I would give you everything that you want, plus probably more. I'd do, I, I agree with Mike, I'd do two speed bumps in every location. You know, I don't, why, why we seem, oh, this is not, why we seem to always procrastinate and.
We're not procrastinating.
Look for something different, or something that's better, when it's right in front of us, I seem to have a problem with sometimes, but that's just the way it is. So I would vote for it. Uh, I'd vote along with Mike, I should say.
All right, thank you. Any additional board comment? All right, last public comment.
My name is Julia Oblon, and I live on Matanzas. Um, those speed bumps are amazing, and I am a typical driver, I think I can speak for most drivers, a sign that says slow down, not even a school zone sign catches my attention sometimes, and I'll race right through that. A lot of times, my husband is driving, and I'm thinking, why are you slowing down? And then I pay attention, and, oh, we're going through a school zone, okay? I don't get penalized going through a school zone at 50 miles an hour if nobody catches me. I get penalized every time I speed over a speed bump. It's, it's physically not comfortable, and, and I think that's what, that's why it works. The signs, they're not working, the sheriffs, you know, they can't be everywhere. I, I spent the whole time when I was a teenager, and I got one ticket that entire time, that's not enough to slow me down, but those speed bumps are so effective. I, I live right in front of one, I have the sign right in front of my place, that's fine by me, if it's gonna save somebody's grandchild, let's go for it. Thanks.
I, I just, I know you had a question as to.
What is your name?
Mark Martin, 2328 Sunrise Drive. Why the petition on Sunrise did not specifically identify where speed bumps are, are, where we want speed bumps placed, I believe that's best left up to a, a, a traffic engineer to make that determination. I, I will point out also that both of those sections of Sunrise I'm speaking of are at least a half a mile in length. I don't know if one speed bump in each one of those sections is going to be enough, and I, I appreciate that we're doing something, I appreciate everybody's cooperation here, uh, something needs to be done, but, you know, if we wanna start out with one in each area of Sunrise, that's fine, but I'd like to see at least two. And again, it, it's probably up to a speed, a, a traffic engineer to best place those.
Thank you. Any other gentleman? Sir?
Ed Ives, I've only been in this community about three years now, but I moved from a gated community in Keys. I lived there for 35 years. We had speed bumps, we had speed bumps that were open in the center for bicycle traffic to go through, so they wouldn't have to go over the speed bump, you know, but it slowed traffic down. Now, the street that we live on, uh, the streets adjacent to us have a dog leg at the end, uh, that's, uh, Palazzo and, uh, Ramiro, no, I live on Ramiro, Palazzo and Santiago, you know, there's a dog leg at the end of those, folks don't wanna do it, so they come out little cross street, and then they hammer it. The school bus is speed on Ramiro, you know, the mailman speeds on Ramiro, you know, Stevie Wonder could see there's an issue here, folks, get yourself some speed bumps. I mean, I got two speed signs on my street, if you're going eastbound, you can see them, one's at one end, one's at the other. There's none westbound. You put that damn thing in my driveway if you'd like, I'm good with it, but I quit riding a bicycle in here, 'cause I got parts I can't buy, if I break something, somebody hits me. You know, what is, what, what, why are you all jumbled up about it? Just go get them. That's all I got for you, folks.
Sir, would you get a petition and?
Sir, I'm 77 years old, I'm not going up and down the street getting petitions for y'all. You know there's a problem, you don't need a petition to know that.
Okay. Well, don't be mad at me, I mean, okay.
You know, like I said, I got two speed signs on the street, and you're all, only agreeing about it.
Any other public comment? Mike, does he have anything else?
I, I agree with Mike and Ray, I think, I think we should put the, put, uh, put two on each, two, two on each area where, you know, we've been going with this for two, three years, you know, I mean, honestly, I, I, I'm talking from a preserve owner, okay? It's ridiculous, we keep voting things down, right? Let's do it, let's finally get it done, okay? We have three areas, four areas to do, all right, and let's try it. If it doesn't work in six months, then we move them, you know? I mean, we have to do something. I mean, you know, the areas where people walk, drive their golf carts, uh, you know, kids on bikes, somebody's gonna get hit one of these days, and I just wanna, I just wanna make sure that I'm standing up telling this board and everybody in this room that there's a concern, okay? Um, I get so frustrated listening to all these, let's wait, 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 okay? I think it's time to move now, I really do, all right? That's all I got to say. Now I'll go back to work for Sunland Lake.
Thank you. All right, with that, we'll adjourn the workshop. Are we gonna do the headband health workshop?
Yes, sir.
Can I move and finish this?
I'm sorry?
Can I make a motion to finish this while they're here? Or do we have to do the other workshop?
I should follow the agenda.
Well, but we're back, we're back in regular meeting now, have, have, we haven't gone to the other workshop yet?
No, we have not.
I just think we should vote on this now.
Uh, yeah, that's what I'm saying, can I make a motion to finish this?
Yes, you can make a motion.
I make a motion that we finish this and vote on the, uh, uh, proposals for traffic calming, based on the petitions offered. Anybody want a second?
Second.
Any other board comment? Public comment?
From, from the board, I'm, I'm not going to support that, because I think that is defeating the purpose of what we've done. I agree it's time to act, but I'm not sure that the correct action is to put speed bumps in everywhere that's been proposed by the public, when we've been spending a lot of time doing a traffic study, to find a better way to control traffic.
That's not the motion.
The motion is whether there's, whether we're going to decide that.
The motion is to have.
Whether we're gonna go off the agenda and make that decision, that's the motion.
Okay, so we're not, we're not voting on a solution, we're voting on making.
Whether we should have the conversation.
Okay.
Right?
Yes.
That's my intention.
Yes, that's my understanding.
So do we vote?
So Chrissy?
There was public comment called for, correct?
Yeah. Supervisor Hoteling?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
President Branson?
Yes.
So I, I, I'll make a motion that we, um, move forward on the, um, pulsed and engineering recommendation as a step to get us moving forward, um, to get these, uh, cushions put in in the key, key areas, get some traffic calming moving forward, uh, and evaluate the success of this start as to what next steps would be.
Before, before I would vote on that, I have a question pertaining to his motion.
Well, you'd have to have a second before we can even discuss.
Oh, I'm sorry, I have to have a second.
I might die for lack of a second.
Well, I'd like to ask a question.
Can I step in on a second, Ed?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'll second.
My question, based on this motion, or do we have to vote it, I'm sorry?
No, no, no.
My question, based on this motion, is who exactly decided this? And, and based on what?
It was originally based off petitions, they, everybody wanted speed bumps.
Yeah.
Um, we sought, we referred to the traffic study that we did, or that we had done, um, there were some alternate methods to the speed bumps, ones that are more friendly to emergency vehicles, that's the whole reason we chose the speed cushions, and we can install them ourselves, as opposed to like a full speed table, um, and that's the main reason. And that's the main reason we went there. The main reason that we did not choose to do multiples in each location, first thing was budget. We didn't want to just go out and spend all the money. And we also wanted to make sure they were going to work before we just bought a bunch of them, which is...
So if I told you budget was not an issue, would you have made a different recommendation?
We probably would have leaned to put more down than just go with it, but that's not...
That's been enough for me. Okay, thank you.
Okay, from my perspective, you people want action. And we understand that and we want action also. This is a pretty decisive action. And if doing this and evaluating it over 30 days doesn't make fiscal sense, then I'm missing something. To go out and double this number and not know what the effect of it's going to be doesn't make good sense.
And management would like an opportunity to evaluate it. I mean, at this point, we, you know, we don't, we don't know the effects of just the cushions itself. So that was another reason for the proposal. It just was not budget.
Wow, we have no problem spending $60,000 on a bathroom. And we won't spend $20,000 or $25,000 for the safety of the people in this community. That's pretty damn sad.
We're, we're not saying we won't spend that money. We're saying we want to spend it wisely.
It's been going on for a year.
We've been doing the study and now it's time to put the study into practice.
It's been a year. It'd be nice to make a decision.
We're recommending a decision to move forward to make sure that the recommendations that we have from the study are good recommendations.
We're not even close to what the study is recommending. If you want to read the study, this is not close to it. She didn't recommend any of this. She recommended changing the roads, doing this and doing that. It had nothing to do with, with any of this. That's not what she recommended, is it?
She recommended a number of alternatives for us to review. We've reviewed that with the engineers and these are the recommended first steps to get us there.
But none of this is what she even recommended.
Well, she recommended some things that she knew couldn't be done, like putting curves into Columbus.
I just think it'll be fine if we can't make a decision today on something.
I agree.
Excuse me, there's a motion and a second.
Yeah. Are we done with board comment? Okay, public comment? Up here, please.
Sally Mogul, 4105 Cortez Boulevard. Okay, my question is, you're talking about going with the recommended, recommendations of the study and what was up here. That doesn't include us getting speed bumps or whatever on Cortez. Is that going to get changed into that or...
At this stage, the proposal as it's written is what we're discussing.
Okay. And, and so that means we won't get speed bumps?
They won't get speed bumps on the first go around. That's factual, yes.
Probably our street, they go the fastest on of any street except for Sunland Lake Boulevard. I'll bet you.
Which is why we need to look at proper calming devices and on a boulevard, speed bumps are not necessarily the right recommendation.
Yeah, I'm just talking about the area where there's a lot of houses where we live, you know, from Granada to, or, or Duena, wherever it's called, Ottega. There's a lot of houses there. The rest of Cortez is sparsely populated. So we're, anyway, in other words, when I go home, tell my sick husband who couldn't be here today, a good thing, let me tell you that, we're not getting speed bumps, no matter what you vote today.
I, I don't think that's necessarily true. We haven't decided anything.
We don't know where the vote's going to go yet. We just have...
You mean you don't know whether the other streets are going to get speed bumps?
No, we have a motion on the table. We don't know that the motion will pass.
Right, but, but whatever happens, we're not in the mix. I just want to get it clear.
You can't make that statement, I don't know. This motion has to be voted on. If it gets voted on and approved, you will not get speed bumps on the first go around.
Yeah, so maybe two, three years, huh?
No, I don't think that's factual at all.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I've been inclined to ignore this problem for years. I just want to spend our money wisely and learn from it, so...
Forrest Poland again. I understand your guys' issue about having to have the petition signed by residents of the area and yet I think that within the Sunland Lake community, everyone knows that, that roads are unsafe, that roads that are heavily used and being used, the speeding and the committee never seems to do anything about it. You know, you make a decision here a year and a half ago about people who didn't want dog park to put in a dog park in an area that wasn't allowed for dogs in the residential areas. So, you know, what benefit does that do other than to make people walk 250 yards from a parking lot to go down and use the dog park? So, you know, I just think that you need to make a decision and basically do something for the entire community. And if you got a stretch that's got a half a mile long section, then put in a speed bump. And I don't care if you got a petition or not. I mean, I'll go through your regimen rule of doing a petition because I understand you said you need to have 20 of them. But it shouldn't have to be done if people understand that are on the board that there's safety issues and should be doing something about it now and not later. Thank you.
Sharon Haverne, Cantoria. 32 years, I paid assessment taxes here. I think I need to have a safe street and I can understand why, after a year, we're still sitting here going, "Well, we can't do it right now. We're going to have to put it in there." I'm tired of waiting. Everybody's tired of waiting. We all live here. We want safe streets now.
George Puffenberg. I basically agree with what Supervisor Brooks said and Supervisor Gilpin. There's a given. We know one thing that does work and that's speed bumps, which I am opposed to, but they are effective. You can debate this thing forever. As an engineer, there's things called analysis by paralysis. You beat this thing around for an hour and 20 minutes and you haven't made a decision yet on what the petitioners want. I can tell you now, striping is not going to work. Two trips over striping, you realize that has no effect. I can still do 60 miles an hour over that striping. So make a decision, get on with it. You can study this thing until the day ends. It'll never, you'll never fix it. Everybody has an opinion. It's you four guys who represent the community have to make a decision. So make it, move forward.
Any additional public comment? Okay.
Supervisor Brooks?
I'm sorry, what am I voting on?
The motion to go forward with the current recommendation.
Go forward with the motion as, as it is on this piece of paper, correct?
Move forward with Polston Engineering's recommendation.
No.
Supervisor Gilpin?
No.
Supervisor Hotelling?
Yes.
President Branson?
Yes.
What does that mean?
Motion dies for...
The motion what?
Motion fails. Motion fails.
Two, two, so...
We can do like Congress and, you know, convene tomorrow at 10 o'clock?
I, I make a motion that we go with two speed bumps or cushions on, on the roads that are recommended.
Can you specify in your motion whether you're recommending bumps or cushions?
Cushions.
I'll second it.
Just so we're clear, so there's a motion on the table that there would be two cushions on each of the roads as listed in the...
Yeah.
So instead of one being two?
Right.
Is that including Cortez?
No, I, I think right now we need to, we need to tell them to get something so we can maybe do something next meeting on Cortez because that is a problem.
We have something from the hotels.
I mean, putting striping there is not going to slow down on Cortez and it's terrible there and I don't blame that lady for being upset. But we're, we're not prepared to do anything on that issue right now, but maybe next meeting, I hope that we can.
Can...
That's all I have.
Okay, you, there's a motion and a second, but I think we need some clarification because there are Sunrise, Cantoria and Cremona that each were recommended one speed cushion and you're recommending two on those, but not speed cushions on Cortez or Mandavia?
Uh, yes.
Does the seconder agree with that?
I'd make a motion. Am I allowed to make a motion?
Well, we got it, we got a motion on the table.
I've got a motion on the table and a second.
Was there a second on it?
You seconded it.
I didn't second it. Mike, I didn't second Mike's.
Yeah.
I don't second that motion. That's, I don't agree with it.
Okay, so you don't...
I'm sorry if I led you to believe differently.
So there's no second?
Okay. Make one, Ray.
So we need a new motion then?
I would make a motion that we give two speed cushions to everybody, Cortez, Sunrise, Cantoria and Cremona. Instead of, I, I don't think we should eliminate Cortez.
I second.
So that's the motion on the table is two speed cushions for Cortez, Sunrise, Cantoria and Cremona, no striping? Are we removing the striping?
For all, all the petitioners, I want two speed cushions. That's what I'm trying to say.
Okay, so I'm trying to make sure, what are we going to, are we keeping the, the striping?
I don't care about the striping.
Okay, so...
Well, let's make it part of the motion.
So that's the, that's the...
Let's make it part of the motion to either keep it or eliminate it.
Okay, my motion will be two speed cushions for each of the petitioners and that's all they would get.
Okay.
Is that good?
Does everybody understand that? Mr. Gilpin, you agree with it?
Yes, yes, I agree.
All right, so that's the motion. We still need some clarification because the petitioner from the preserve included Cremona and Mandavia and you're saying two for Cremona and two for Mandavia.
No.
The petition for Cremona only requested one and Mandavia requested one, is what he's trying to say. The petition...
I'm, I'm working off your cover sheet. So if that's not correct, then I have to amend my thingamajiggy.
That's what we need to clarify is what, what are you really recommending? Because Mandavia didn't...
I'm recommending on this piece of paper, which supposedly is the traffic calming and paving projects that we received, that we do Cortez, Sunrise, Cantoria, Cremona...
But the recommendation is, is not cushions on every one of those points.
Well, that's what I'm bringing, that's what I'm saying I want to do. That's my, that's my...
That's the motion. And what I'm saying is the petition for Mandavia only had one request and the petition for Cremona only had one request and it was one petition for those two from the preserve.
The, what, what we, what we discussed and they unofficially, not on, not on paper, but they requested the, the speed cushion on Mandavia be relocated to Cremona, but we don't have that in official writing. That's why we didn't have it listed on here.
So, so the recommendation even from the petition is two on Cremona, but not two on Mandavia? And your, your motion is two on Mandavia where, where I don't even know where it would go.
Mandavia's not on here.
Mandavia is on there, but it's not with speed cushions.
It's for a speed sign. It's for Mike's sign.
Okay, but your, your motion included Mandavia.
You just, you just need to clarify your motion for the speed cushions.
Well, tell me what I'm trying to say, would you?
You need to clarify your motion for...
I think, bear with me, Ray. I think what you're asking for is two on Cortez, two on Sunrise, two on Cantoria.
Yeah.
You said two on Cremona, but that's probably one.
No.
Not on Mandavia.
No.
He wants two on Cremona.
I want two on Cremona and Mandavia, if I have to put it as part of the motion, would be the speed sign that's already been bought.
Why do you want two on Cremona if they only...
Because that's what they want.
They requested one.
They, they changed their recommendation apparently to wanting two on Cremona and not one on Mandavia.
Okay, so at that point, if we take the striping out, incremental cost differential's only $3,000.
Okay, so we've got a clarified motion. Does the seconder agree to the clarified motion?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Any other board comment?
Why don't you guys get off trying to figure out how many you want? Why don't you tell our, all, everybody that petitioned for speed bumps? Have the, have the district engineer, somebody say, "This is where we want to put them. This is how many we, we want" in order to be effective, rather than saying, "One here and two here and three here." One or two on Sunrise is not going to, it's not going to hack it, you know? You just got to put them where they're going to slow people down and not affect the overall flow of the traffic. It's, it is, you're getting it, I think you're getting it too definitive where, where, where it shouldn't be, in my opinion.
Well, I think this, this motion at least goes and gives us the authorization to purchase them and we will certainly place them.
But you got to place them strategically where if you're going to add more...
We understand that.
You don't have to tear them up and move them.
We understand that.
That's what you got to do.
Yep. Thank you. Any other public comment?
Go up to the microphone, please.
Good morning. My name is Eric Simpson, former sergeant from Hollins County Sheriff's Office, who's here at Management Facility. One of my neighbors called me this morning and said, "Eric, could you go down there to the meeting? When these speed bumps on Cremona, no one seemed to want to do anything." Now, I live on Cremona and I see people running up and down there like it's a raceway. I myself consider calling Paul, having sort of a couple of sheriff deputies down there with radar and let them issue tickets. Now, I understand that we have this lovely community. Me as a citizen, I've been here in Hollins County before this community was built. It used to be a nice little field where Cub Scouts, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts would come and camp. But like anything else, things develop. The majority of people here are not even from here. They come with their different thoughts and how they want it to be ran, from whatever reason to where they was living before. Now that we are here, I could do what I just said. Call Paul, put in a request that we have a lot of deputies out here with radars and issue enough tickets for people will slow down all over the place, if that's what everybody wishes. But yes, we do need speed bump, not for just the safety of the citizens. Our citizens, it's a mixed age group. A lot of them have their pets and they walk. A lot of them have where they go for walks throughout the community. You have a lot of them who cycle throughout the community. And safety is paramount. I would not want to see someone who's walking their pet for their pet to do its business, the pet getting run over or the person getting run over trying to save their pet. Or some child that is playing with his ball and the ball began to roll into the street and the child chased after it and the child become a victim. Whatever we decide, need to be for the decision that's going to be safety for all. Again, one of my neighbors called me and requests that I come. I am here, I'm speaking on behalf of the community. Regardless of what it costs, put it in, make it safe. It is less costly than someone suing this community. And that would be all I have to say about it.
Thank you. Any additional public comment? Chrissy?
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hotelling?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
President Branson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now we ready to start the Advent Health workshop?
Good morning, Supervisors. The person, the, the purpose of the workshop today is to review and a recap of the Advent Health presentation back in September. We also have provided you some cost estimates of what it would cost Sun and Lake to build a 3,500 square foot facility in addition to maintenance and other labor costs. And we will also review a partnership and sponsorship opportunities. Advent Health has provided a more detailed information about each sponsorship level, so we'll go into that at the end of the, of the workshop.
Good morning. So we will jump into a quick recap. The presentation that was presented by Advent Health for the construction of their new fitness center, a few of the highlights that they touched on, so obviously I'm not gonna go into full detail because we were here for the entire presentation, but a couple of the highlights there. They are talking about a 23,000 square foot fitness center. A couple of the highlights in this fitness center or around on the property would be a community garden, a 1.3 mile wellness trail with fitness obstacles, newly constructed parking areas featuring golf cart parking, 24-hour access to the facility with year-round access, and located within Sun and Lake, so accessible by golf cart for Sun and Lake residents. The next few slides are some of the renderings that were provided by Advent Health of the facility. These are renderings they had developed by an artist that they shared with us at their presentation. So this is just kind of an overview of the property. This would be one of the views of the front of the facility. This particular picture is showcasing the back of the facility and the community garden that they are proposing. Same with this, this is just another view. This is just more of a tranquil area that they are proposing somewhere that residents or members can kind of just come out and congregate within these areas and get some fresh air. So this is a little bit of a blueprint of the facility. Within the facility, they are proposing a good-sized machine room, two group fitness rooms, three massage rooms, locker rooms with a shower facility located within, two educational conference rooms, both to include demonstration kitchens for cooking classes, a juice bar, which I believe will be more towards the entrance in the lobby, manicure and pedicure stations, and saunas. And these are some of the renderings for the inside of the facility. Over on the right, you'll see what almost looks like a glassed-in area, I mean, it would be to the right of the reception desk. They were proposing also somewhere in this general vicinity doing a merchandise location. So this would be one of their massage rooms, one of their spa rooms, and the demonstration kitchen slash educational conference room. So what we did on these next couple of slides is put together, this is obviously just some of the costs that we knew if Sun and Lake were to pursue at any point to develop our own fitness facility and construct a fitness facility to expand, obviously, on what we have now, these are some of the costs that we know we would incur. This is by no means a complete list of expenses or a final cost, but rather just some estimates that we've put together to kind of give us a general idea of, of where we would be looking at so that we can use that for comparative purposes. So in your, in the presentations that you have in front of you, you'll see one of those is a facility construction estimate. That's some of the things that we included in there. We would obviously have office space needed, fitness classrooms, parking area that includes golf cart parking, of course, upgrades to our security system to allow for the 24-hour access. We would obviously have to kind of up the ante on our security system a little bit, so there would be a cost associated with that. Installation of a shower facility with the restrooms and the locker rooms. And the estimate that we have put together for there, you can see at the bottom, they're down, they're down in blue. I apologize, some of the formatting kind of got switched up in transition. The next column, you'll see there's machinery and equipment. So again, not by any means all-inclusive, but just gives you a little bit of an idea of what we might be looking at to fill this space with the equipment that we would need in a new fitness center. So then on this page, same thing, it's just a continuation. There would obviously be some cost incurred for staffing the facility. Adding a new facility of this size to Sun and Lake would definitely increase the need for recreation staff, so that is in the left column. And over on the right-hand column, you see the estimates that are totaled together down at the bottom. Some of the things that this does not include would obviously be the annual cost for upkeep of the facility and the equipment within, cost of adding additional fitness classes and fitness instructors, furniture for the office in the facility, insurance, and obviously the utility costs, et cetera. So like I said, this is by no means an all-inclusive or a complete list or any kind of a final estimate, but rather something to give us kind of a conversation piece so that we can use for comparative purposes. So on the next slide is the partnership opportunities that were provided to us by Advent Health. This is their proposal to Sun and Lake. There are different contribution levels, obviously at different price points, that come with a different level of contractual obligations by Advent Health to Sun and Lake, the deliverables there within. So what I've done is in the, in the next couple of slides, we were provided a list of deliverables from Advent Health that would go along or coincide with each sponsorship level. So you guys can kind of take a look at that. Obviously, the higher the contribution level, the, the higher the deliverables are there within. And this is obviously gonna be small on the screen. I know you have it in front of you, so I won't necessarily go line by line with each of these, so I don't know if you guys have any, any questions regarding the different levels, we can kind of open it up from there.
I think most of it is self-explanatory, but there was a reference to the, where did I see it here? The, um, hmm, there it is, second page. Well, now I'm not finding it, but there was an executive, um-
The executive physical program? Is that what you're looking at?
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for.
Okay. It's on the first page. I don't have a lot of details on that, the executive physical program. Honestly, they, they didn't, this is, this is exactly what we got. So with that, I would have to get some more details on exactly what that includes. I don't even know that that's a program that they have, I don't know if that's a program that they already have existing or if that's something they're looking at adding when they have the new facility. I really, I really don't know what that is.
What's our current membership here?
The current number of fitness members?
Yeah. Do you know?
I do, not off the top of my head, but we can get that pulled, we can-
I mean, I mean, we talking a couple hundred, 50, 10, I mean ballpark?
Kelly's, Kelly's gonna grab it really quick. So we'll, we'll get that number. Honestly, I'm not really sure what, how to ballpark that.
Because, I mean, there is a situation, I think Gold's Gym closed.
Yes, that is correct. Gold's Gym has officially closed.
And I guess they're moving all their equipment to someplace in the mall?
Planet Fitness. Planet Fitness. There is a Planet Fitness.
They gave it to the Y.
Did they donate it?
Oh, they gave it to the Y. But Alan Jay's doing something, Planet Fitness. He owns them both, right? Or you own them both?
Planet Fitness.
Planet Fitness.
Planet Fitness.
I, I can't confirm, I'm not honestly sure who the owner, I guess, or the person that, that brought Planet Fitness here is, but I know that there is a Planet Fitness that is coming. I believe it's the Kmart location in the Lake Shore Mall.
So I guess my first question to you guys would be, what do you recommend?
So. Obviously, looking, looking at what they're proposing there, it depends, honestly, and I, that's, that's not a, what I did is I kind of sorted through the total deliverables and broke them out in a couple of different categories, I guess if you will. So looking at one, one part, and of course, looking, I went, I tried to go by the full, the, the naming rights, so, which is of course their largest, which is the one that they're proposing. Looking at that, a couple of the elements, or I guess if you were, if you were to categorize the deliverables that are within the naming rights, so their, their largest sponsorship, you've got a discount element, so which is gonna be the discount to Sun and Lake residents who are members specifically, okay? So there, there's obviously some of those that can be broken down into that category. You can look at it from a marketing and branding exposure perspective because there is some of that included. A couple of things that they talked about was like naming inclusion of, or I'm sorry, like the Sun and Lake name being included on their merchandise. There are press releases that are associated with that. Obviously, the naming rights alone, it becomes the Sun and Lake Wellness Center, you know, the Advent Health, Sun and Lake Wellness Center, so there, there's a huge element that goes with that as well. The inclusion of Sun and Lake on all of their print and digital media, that's, that's a huge piece as well. There are Sun and Lake member benefits, like I said, so there are things that they're proposing within their largest sponsorship that are exclusive to people who join as members who are Sun and Lake residents. They talked about kind of developing and designing specific classes geared towards Sun and Lake residents. I think they namely mentioned in there things like pickleball, golf, some of the things that we offer here in Sun and Lake, so that kind of makes a nice seamless transition for residents and members. And then looking at it from, there's obviously a district benefit and promotion there. Some of the things that they specifically mentioned in there had to do with like private tours or the display of our marketing materials within their facility, ways to help us in turn, I guess really, with like recruitment. So obviously, there would kind of be a nice transition there with, with the current marketing campaign we have there. I don't, I don't really know how to recommend. I mean, it honestly is up to you guys. As you can see, what we're being offered and what, what's included in each sponsorship level diminishes, if you will, the farther down you go. Obviously, when you are the naming sponsor, when you are the top sponsor for a facility like this, yes, you, you, you get it all. You get everything that you see here, you get the red carpet, you know? I'm, I'm sure that if there was something that we felt was just missing, that we really wanted to include, we can go back to the drawing board with them and see if that's something that we can get included. So this isn't, if there was something that was kind of outstanding in your opinion, that you really felt like this was maybe lacking, then that's something we can go back to the table. And as their highest sponsor, you have the ability to do that. The ability to do that diminishes some the lower your contribution level. So it, it really comes down to what, looking at the proposal between contributing to a 23,000 square foot facility that is going to offer Sun and Lake as a whole as a community and our residents, quite frankly, something that we as a district, we would never be able to do this. We would never be able to create what they're getting ready to create in our community. And I think that it is obviously a huge asset to our community, the fact that you can ride your golf cart right over and obviously, there's the manicure, pedicure station. So I mean, there's, there's a little bit of everything for everyone here. I think a lot of different age levels, a lot of different target demographics. It's really a matter of your, your preference.
Have you had any discussions with the hospital as far as the timing of payments? I mean, if we went for a million five, are they looking for a check or are they saying-
Nope. So at, at the very end of this, the, at the end of the breakdown of the deliverables, you'll see that there is a payment term section. So at the very back, let's see, for the naming contribution, they are offering a 15- to 20-year payoff term for that. So obviously, your, your payments could range from $100,000 to $75,000 a year, depending on what you, what we selected as a payoff term. Going down the line, going through the other proposals for sponsorship, they're only offering a 10, I say only, I mean, they're offering a 10-year payoff term. So that goes for each except for the very last one, which is the massage room. That's a $30,000 sponsorship contribution. That one has a five-year payoff term. But other than that, they're offering the longest payoff term for the, the naming rights to the building to, for their largest sponsorship.
Based on the conversations that we had with them last month, some of these things appear to be negotiable.
Yes.
Including the payment terms.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
So the, the benefit of the donation and the payment terms could be better than this indicates.
Potentially. I think we definitely have the right to do that. Yeah, I mean, I think we have the ability to definitely go back. If we said, if you guys were more comfortable with a 25-year payoff term, I think that we would have the ability to go back and, and counter with that, without a doubt.
Did you get an answer on the membership? Do we have it?
Yeah, what? What are you asking for?
How many members we have here?
Okay, so evidently, the, the report's not generating. It's, it's definitely gonna, I would, I'm throwing a complete ballpark out here and I'm gonna say somewhere around a couple hundred.
Couple hundred?
Yeah, I, that's, that is the biggest ballpark number I can throw out because I don't, I haven't, I don't have numbers.
And we pay, or, or, I'm sorry, the members pay $50 a year?
$60 a year.
$60.
$60 plus tax a year.
If I look at this, it's $27 a month.
So it's, yes, yes. It's 30- It's $30 a month for access to the entire facility. It is 27 if you paid upfront. They're giving you an additional 5% discount, so on that first line, you'll see, one of these lines. It says on there, yes, so it says, "If annual membership and enrollment fee paid in full, receive 5% discount off total annual cost," which would take it from that 30, then down to $27 a month, which you would be paying in full upfront. Otherwise, if you, if you chose to do it in a monthly payment, then it would be $30 a month for Sun and Lake residents, which is the same rate that they are offering to their employees. So I want to say it's $40 a month. So if a non-resident of Sun and Lake came there, their fee is gonna be starting at $40 for an individual membership. Sun and Lake residents would be at $30.
Did they indicate at all that that's negotiable? Because in my mind, I'd like, I'm looking for what it would cost a Sun and Lake resident and would like if we're gonna invest a lot of money in that we would get absolutely
This is the resident rate that matches their employee rate.
Right, so-
Yeah, well, but that's-
Can we make and ask, yes, do I think that they're gonna go lower than that? No, because this is the same rate that they're offering the employees of Advent Health, yes.
But clarify for me if you can, because I think I know the answer to this, that many of our residents are on Silver Sneakers plans through their health centers.
Yes.
And I think that they'll accept Silver Sneakers, so there would be no cost.
That is correct. So they will, they, they will honor the Silver Sneakers program, so, and if I'm not mistaken, it may even be in addition to something, there was something else, and I, forgive me, I can't remember the name of whatever the other program was.
We asked-
There was another one.
We asked them to make a commitment that they would not increase their price beyond the limit of Silver Sneakers. So you would assure all the residents here that Silver Sneakers would always pay their dues in full.
Right. We did, we asked them to confirm that, because we let them know that we had, that right now, we do accept Silver Sneakers and that obviously, it's at no cost then to the member, now, we do accept Silver Sneakers, and that obviously, it's at no cost then to the member, whether it's, you know, resident or whoever, that we will accept that, and they have committed to accepting that as well. I think that that was something that they had already planned on doing, but we did make that ask, so that we can confirm that.
I think the 200 members that we currently have is kind of an irrelevant number, because the facility is so small that a lot of our residents go to the other fitness centers, because there's just not enough room.
So, our current capacity that is posted in our fitness center is nine. And speaking personally, if there were nine people in that fitness center, I would not go in. So, you're not going to fit, you would be very hard-pressed to fit nine people in there. Now, what is included also with our membership are classes, fitness classes that we offer, with the exception, the pool's a little different, that requires a pool membership. But true fitness classes that we offer, whether that's body toning, yoga, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, those are included in their membership, and to the best of my knowledge, they indicated that that would be the case as well.
And those activities would move to that facility.
That is correct.
Which would take a lot of stress off of the schedule here.
Yes, so that would relieve the community center of being used for fitness classes here, because we would be directing those fitness classes. They would be taking over and consuming that.
So, we need to finish the board discussion, but I'm interested in hearing what some of the public have to say, because my thinking is that if we increased the assessment 5%, so from $700 to $735, that would generate about $15,000 a year, which would pay off a million five. Am I getting that right?
Are we, are we serious about this? Are we serious about doing this?
The million five is one of their levels. Realistically, every conversation I've been in with them, we've talked in terms of the $200,000 level, and gaining these benefits through the negotiation process. At that point, if you have a 20-year payout, it becomes pretty manageable, $10,000 a year. And still get all these benefits that we're looking for without, I don't think you have any expectation that we're going to be the million five guys.
Right, I think this is a wonderful benefit for the community, and having our name associated with it is a real positive. And to redo my calculations, at 10% of 3 million would be 150,000. So, 10 years would pay a million five. So, if everybody would be willing to pay another $35 on the assessment, we could go in at the major support to see this happen more quickly.
Right.
But I don't know how our community feels about another $35 a year.
Is your telephone number listed?
My telephone number is listed.
Right. Obviously, what, another thing this doesn't include is, right now, we do have a fitness facility, we do have machinery that's in there, there is upkeep that goes with the facility. So, I mean, there, some of that would be removed when we don't have a fitness facility. But yes, you are correct.
I don't understand the whole thing. We trying to build up Sun 'n' Lake, or am I trying to build up Florida Hospital? Which one is it?
Sun 'n', well, Florida Hospital, Advent Health being in Sun 'n' Lake.
I don't care, it's not, it's not Sun 'n' Lake. I'm Sun 'n' Lake. If somebody says to me, we're going to spend a wild and crazy number.
I can't hear you.
If somebody says something to me that it's a wild and crazy number, I'd say, I love your proposal to build our own place, our own facility. I mean, if I had that much money, I'd say, let's build our own facility. I don't want to give the hospital any money.
But what we don't have then, by making a contribution to Advent Health, is we don't have, A, any of the liability for any of that, B, we don't have any of the upkeep costs that is associated with that, C, we have no staffing that is involved with that. If you build your own facility, that's, and that's like I said, I mean, that's why we put together a very rough, rough, rough estimate of what it might cost us, because there's no way for us to know what it's going to cost us to build this facility, put it, fill it with equipment, fill it with what we need to make it something that's worth building. The cost of upkeep, there's no way for us to come up with a true, hard, definitive number on that.
But based on the numbers, we're talking about almost as much to build our own facility, which would be a much lesser facility.
Correct.
That wouldn't meet the needs as well as this larger facility would do. And it's in our neighborhood.
Right.
They're in Sun 'n' Lake, so if they build it in Sun 'n' Lake, it's part of Sun 'n' Lake.
So, we're going to give this money, and we're going to get a name plaque?
No, you're going to get everything that's shown on that deliverable piece. There is much more than just your name on the front of a building. Building our own facility also doesn't put our name.
I'm going to get an invitation to participate in an executive physical program. That, that's on there, right?
Yeah, but we don't know what that means.
I'm going to get the company name on the donor wall. I'm going to get the company name on designated area based on the gift level. Do you think people really care about that?
I think it can be something that would help attract new residents to Sun 'n' Lake.
I agree.
I think if you had your own facility, and you said, this is part of the amenities that we're able to offer to people who want to move here, that to me is a little bit more...
Essentially, we can say, if our name is on it, this is our facility, and it, well, exactly. We've got all the benefits of ownership without any of the costs of ownership, and we've got a facility that is 10 times the size that we could build.
No, I kind of think it's a good idea, but, because I just, I questioned whether we would build that big a place to get $1.2 million that we need, but I would have no problem with it if it was $10,000 or $15,000 a year that we did it, because I know when we moved here, my wife with Silver Sneakers wanted to go down to the Y, and we couldn't do it. So, I just think it's an added benefit to Sun 'n' Lake, but again, it's the cost and what benefits we can do for Sun 'n' Lake residents is what my concern would be. But it doesn't sound too bad. But I, you know, this is the first I have heard about it. I know Joe's been involved, but I'm certainly not against it. I'd like to learn more.
I think the approach should be, and this is just an opinion, but if we pick the level we think we want to support, and again, in my mind, I spent the $200,000 to get the naming rights to the entryway lobby, which would be the highest visibility we could hope for without spending a million five, negotiate the benefits that they return to us for that, and they are very negotiable. Our commitment is $10,000 a year, and we give people access to a facility that won't exist anywhere else. Nothing will be comparable to this in terms of a health club or gymnasium. That's my opinion. And the commitment to keep the cost below the cap on Silver Sneakers means that most of the residents of Sun 'n' Lakes will never have to pay a penny to go there. Any other board comment?
Well, I mean, if, I'm going to lose this vote, but I won one today, I feel okay. So, if we're going to, if we're going to do, pick a level, I would like to see at a future meeting, not that the level has been decided upon, but if we were to do this level, this is exactly what the hospital's going to do for us.
I think that's very easily done. I think we could have that easily by the next meeting.
And then I think we can have more of an intelligent conversation on whether we throw, spend the money or not.
And I'll be looking to the board for that number, so if the board says, this is the level we want to be at, then we can go back to Advent Health at that point.
You should take the number from them.
It doesn't have to be today, we don't have to talk numbers today, but we can, we can bring this back.
I think if you bring it back to us with, I agree with Ray, I mean, we have to be specific and know exactly what we're getting and for what, and, because he's probably like me, this is our first opportunity to look at this. It's all been rumored to us, so I wouldn't act, want to act on anything till I knew exactly what we were getting for what cost.
Right, so in this, it does have the breakdown per sponsorship level. My personal opinion would be if there, if you, if you were leaning towards entryway or whichever level, we need to go to them with a counter saying, we are looking at this one, but we would like to have included what's on here, because this is what, this is their sponsorship proposal to us. At one, two, three, four, five, six different sponsorships are presented on here, and it's outlining and detailing what you would be getting at that contribution level. So, that's basically this whole graph. So, if there was something specifically on here that you said, we're interested in entryway and main lobby, however, we would like to negotiate in the following pieces, that is our counter to them. So, we kind of have to have, I think the next, honestly, the decision is on us to say, we are interested in this with this, or kind of how that goes, because they're not...
Ariel, I think it's just, it's important, because the Sunshine Law, I can't call Joe up this afternoon and ask him what the heck he wants, what he recommends. I mean, I don't know yet, except he just mentioned the 200,000 level. I mean, we need to talk about it probably right here, right now, because.
I agree, because I was...
I'm clueless.
Yeah, we can't take...
Unless you, unless you let me call him, but I don't think...
I'd like to hear from the public.
Yeah, well, that too, but, you know, I...
Public.
Any other board comment?
Public. I will say that Florida Hospital is one of the cornerstones of the community, and that's probably the only good thing I'm going to say about this whole program. Remember, we already donate $5,000 a year to these people on their gala, so we're already in for five grand, and we've been doing it for many, many years. So, I understand what we plan on doing is closing down our current fitness center.
Not true.
Which, by the way, is not capacity. I've been in there several times, and I've never seen any more than two or three people in there at a time. So, I don't think I have to worry about it being too small, or not being able to support what normally goes in there. And by the way, it's a free perk for the membership, and it's available to all the residents in a nominal annual fee, if they want to go in there, pump a little iron, ride a bike, or whatever. You know, several years ago, I'll give you a little history, some of you weren't around, but Advent Health, or Florida Hospital, had a local fitness facility, and they actually came in and recruited, or I'd say stole away, I shouldn't say stole away, our director, our recreational director, and shortly thereafter, they closed down the operation. They donated their equipment, they didn't donate it to Sun 'n' Lake, they donated it to Highland Ridge, that's my understanding. And now, they're planning to design this new wellness center, and it's good for them. Congratulations. I think they've got it already planned, they're probably going to do it whether we participate or not. Advent Health's comprised of 47 hospitals, they got 1,200 care centers with 83,000 employees, and they're benefiting from generation-old tax exemptions with huge tax entitlements. And they're, you know, the, and the effect on the tax base is quite substantial, because these operations and similar operations are gobbling up all these properties that were on the tax rolls, once they buy it, they go off the tax rolls. It's a real problem for counties and cities and communities, and it makes our taxes go up ultimately. And I don't want to pay another $35 to donate a million and a half to these guys, because they're going to probably do it. In reality, there's no way that they're a nonprofit organization, because they have annual income of billions of dollars, they have net operating, net operating income, I mean, they have revenue of millions, billions of dollars, and net operating income of hundreds of millions of dollars. And I remember, there was a presentation several months ago, where a gal came in and presented this whole thing. She made the comment that within three, three years, they expect to be profitable. So, this is not going to be a nonprofit deal for them, they're going to expect to make money on it. And I don't think, I don't even know if it's legal, David, for us to contribute to a enterprise that's a far-profit enterprise. I mean, I don't remember us ever doing it. I know we don't, we don't want to get involved in far-profit things and donate our facilities or our time or our money to that, to that type of endeavor, but it probably might be, but I don't know. Do they have any other partners? Avon Park, or, I know initially, she called this Sebring Wellness Center, now she's changed the name to Sun 'n' Lake Wellness Center. I noticed that differential from...
Only if we pay a million and a half.
Do I?
That's the proposal, if we pay a million and a half.
Well, yeah, but her first proposal, she called it a Sebring, now she's calling it Sun 'n' Lake. So, I doubt they got any other partners. I mean, they may have, I don't know. I would expect somebody maybe to come back and ask them if they do have anybody else partnering up with them. I doubt if the county or any of the other municipalities, we're at easy mark. We are an easy mark. They keep coming, people keep, they keep coming to us, and they, we get, we let them get away with it. I don't know what it is. And the last thing I'm going to say, if the board agrees to this, I'm going to say this would be a flagrant misuse of the people's money. It really would be.
I was in Gold's Gym for three years, and when it closed down, then I heard about Planet Fitness, and I thought, I'm going to go there when they open up. This sounds beautiful, but if it means more money and assessments for me, why wouldn't I go to Planet Fitness, where it won't cost me anything, because of Silver Sneakers? So, the way I look at it, not only that, but for the people that will not be going to this, have to pay more in assessments, and we have an awful lot of senior citizens here, living on just their social security, which that does mean, man, $35 doesn't sound like a lot, but it's just more, you know, after you're paying your property tax and your house insurance, and so on and so forth. But just as a resident here, I will go to Planet Fitness. I would not go to this, even though it sounds beautiful, but I don't think we should be raked any more money out of it, and I agree with him 100% on that.
Can I make a point? If we go at the lower levels, there'd be no effect on assessment.
If there'd be no level of assessment, yeah, probably you would get more.
That's fine.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that was Neil's interpretation of it, or I don't know if it's...
Yeah.
Name's Steve Pritty. I moved in here four and a half years ago. This is my first time attending this. After hearing this, my question is, well, as everybody's is, sure, the HOA is probably going to have to go up, plus, then we have to pay to get into this. I disagree with drawing in people with this. You're going to find out, with people like she says, with fixed income, they're going to leave. They're going to move to places they don't have to pay a high HOA. This is a waste of money. We have a hard time buying speed bump. bumps, and then you, they're thinking, they're asking us to give $20,000 a year, or $100,000 a year. It's just uncalled for. Should not be. Thank you.
Additional public comment?
George Puffenberger. I was here at the initial presentation, and unless I was asleep or just groggy like him 90% of the time. I thought the initial fee for veterans, firefighters, and Sun and Lake residents was going to be $25.
So I actually, that's not included on here. I believe they did speak to a special discount for, like, a first responders and veterans, but they did not include that on here. So I apologize. I don't have that number.
Does that mean they've dropped it, or this is oversight?
Well, this was provided by them, so that's something that, yeah, I don't know. I only have, obviously, the proposal that they submitted.
Let me make another question, I mean-
Well, contrary to what some fellow citizens have said, the only thing that I agree with them on is, if you raise the assessments anymore, you haven't heard anything yet. Because 80% of the residents in this district can't stand up and say, "Here's what I get for my assessment." The single biggest contribution a district ought to make for that assessment to the residents is roads and drainage. And a roads program is pathetic, with a capital P. When you spend $200,000 to $300,000 a year on roads, million on a kitchen, millions on a golf course, that benefits 15% of the residents, and I am a golfer, have been for 24 years. This is all out of kilter. I basically think this is a fine idea. I work out all the time. That's why I'm at as good a shape at 86 years old. Gold's Gym closed. They donated their equipment to the Y. I went to the Y before I went to Gold's Gym. The Y isn't a whole lot bigger than this room right here, if you've been there. Planet Fitness is coming to the mall. It's a world-class organization, but it's not as convenient as getting my golf cart and driving over there. My suggestion would be for the board, is I think, I'm not sure which board member suggested it, come up with a number. Two numbers. We'll donate this much annually. Here's what we want in return. We want, instead of $20,000, we want $20 for Sun and Lake residents. There wasn't one time over 250 people in Sun and Lake had volunteered at the hospital. That's huge. I don't know how many is there now. The volunteer office over there could tell you. And rather than raising assessments, there's a real easy way to pay for them. $12,000 or $10,000 a year. To get more in line with county boards, if this board would agree to drop their monthly stipend from $300 to $100 a month, and said, "You're the highest paid in Highlands County," that comes out $12,000 a year, and that covers anything and doesn't touch on the assessment one penny. Thank you.
Because I wanted to hear public opinion. Yeah, come on.
Sharon, can I, Javita McKinney, Palos Street, resident. If possible, I would like to suggest that be fixed up. If money needs to go out to benefit the residents, maybe upgrade their, our already existing gym. So, that was one point. Upgrade it, get another job, those two in there. It might benefit the residents better. Or if we have to do what this gentleman is saying, that was a good idea as well, then get rid of it and do something productive with that space.
Paul Pelsky. I'm a new resident of the district, but I've been in the area for 35 years, and I've been in South Florida my entire life.
What's her name?
Paul Pelsky.
Okay.
So my wife and I just purchased a condo across the street, as a matter of fact. We're members here at this community center. My wife teaches water aerobics at the Y, as a matter of fact, and I'm a member at the Y, as she, and I'm also a member here, including the piece with the fitness. I've been in there once. I never see anybody in there. And so I come down, the first thing that hit me was, what's our purpose for serving the district in terms of, and what's it going to cost us? What's the benefit? What's the number-one benefit? What's the second benefit? And if it's, I see fitness being the overwhelming coverage in terms of the presentation, and I've never seen this presentation before, and it's my first visit here as well. So first would be, if we need that, we have that need, whether it be silver sneakers or whatnot, then why don't we carve a piece of that out of either the community center, meeting room, or whatever, and expand it, and make it better, and make it usable? Because right now, I'm at the Y a couple times a week, so. And again, I enjoy this meeting and the discussion that takes place, but I likewise say, if we can debate for an hour and a half over speed bumps, and I live on Montez, then we should give a little more attention, I think, to possibly spending or committing up to a million and a half. So, thank you.
Sally Sunderland, resident. I don't think we should give a dime to Advent Health. Not a dime. They have so much money and pay no taxes. Why should we give them more?
Additional public comment? All right, we'll turn to workshop.
So, I'm sorry. Do we decide anything? I thought we were going to come up with a number. What do we do that now?
We do that now in meeting mode.
Oh, we're in the meeting mode? So we're going to, so my understanding is now we're going to come up with a number that you guys are going to take and go back and renegotiate what that number will buy us.
Yes, we would need a counter offer from Sun and Lake to give to Advent Health, to their foundation. That is, that is what I would need to go back to them, would be, A, if there's any interest, then yes, it would be a counter. If there's absolutely no interest, then a counter is not necessary.
I would like to see us explore the $200,000 level. Much, that's just my opinion. Anybody have a different number in mind, or?
I don't have a different number in mind, but from what I'm hearing from the public here, zero is the number they like. So what I would, what I would like to perhaps see is a broader survey of the community, to see what our community thinks is the right number.
Okay. Well, keep in mind that all we're doing is asking them the question on the front end, you know, what would you provide if we were to donate at this level? So-
So we're not committing to-
We're not committing any funds. We're not doing anything of that nature. We're just trying to define what the opportunity is.
Right. So on, if, if what you're proposing is potentially exploring the entryway and main lobby, what's included, has the three X marks? What, right, so what I would need is, what additionally from the all-inclusive list of deliverables, are you asking for me to go back and ask for, in addition to being, or to add to that sponsorship, is what I would need?
Right now, if we did, if we asked, inquired about the $200,000, that buys us just those three things, right?
That is correct.
Free classes-
With the, with a 10-year payoff term.
Right.
Asking for coin.
So you want me to go back and ask, because what they're, right, what they're proposing is 10, so you're saying to include that I would ask for a 20-year?
They told me they'd be willing to do that.
Only on the 1.5?
No, that's not what they told me.
I wasn't privy to any secret conversations.
No, it was at a lunch meeting that we had with them. I mean, the worst thing you could get for asking is no. You're not going to get it if you don't ask. So-
Numbers we considering?
The $200,000 level was my thought.
I should go see them.
But I think one of, one of the other things we should be asking for is a discount for our residents.
Okay.
Oh, I agree.
Well, if it's for inquiry only.
Anything else?
Joe, one more. Can I make one more comment, please?
Sure.
Your information?
Absolutely.
Advent Health's going to do this with or without us. How come we want to throw a bunch of money at them?
I'm sorry.
They're either going to do it, or they're not going to do it, with or without us.
We understand that.
Well, okay. Just wanted to make one more point. Thank you.
Again, the objective, from my perspective, would be to gain an advantage. I mean, we're not, I'm not looking to just give them money for the sake of giving them money. I want something in exchange for that.
I'm sorry, Joe. I misunderstood. I thought we were going to look at a $200,000 level, and then see what we can get out of that.
That's what I said.
That's money. Excuse me.
But again, it's what we get out of that that you need to evaluate.
Okay.
If we get the reduced membership rate for residents, and we get other privileges, then that's where it becomes something that we may want to talk about.
Okay.
If they hold it around and say you don't get any of that stuff, I lose interest in a hurry.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And maybe a realistic cost on what it would cost us to redo this little thing we got over here.
Joe, one question. Is $200,000 an annual cost, or is that a one-time?
That's a one-time cost. I'll spread it over 20 years, so it's $10,000 a year.
Ariel, did you hear when I said we should have a realistic look at what it would cost us to fix this, too?
When you say fix, what are you asking for fix? Because we just updated $10,000 worth of equipment last fiscal year. So what, what is the ask for a fix for the current facility that we have?
More?
Well, when I saw, if we have to build something, or what, but I don't think that's realistic, 1.2 million dollars for us, because we wouldn't do that. I mean, I wouldn't even listen to that. 1.2 million to build our own facility.
I can tell you, as a member here who doesn't use it very often, one of the things that lacks from most gyms is a shower. So I've literally got to stop in and run home before I can do anything else.
And that's what I mean. I mean, I just think, one, you know, if we don't do this, then we got to do something with that, I think, and that's realistic. I mean-
I agree with that.
You know, so I want to know what, you know, I'd like to know what it would cost us to do this, I mean, do it.
I happen to agree with Mike. Why don't we go over to, why don't you take a ride over to Tanglewood?
We've already seen it. We've already seen it.
That's what I'd like. That room that Tanglewood's got, I don't know, Mike, are you familiar with that?
No.
Their facility, and they have a trainer over there. I don't know if they still do. They did it one time. That facility to me, I think, would make everybody happy. How much it would cost to convert that, I don't know. But that type of facility is cool. It was very nice.
And that's what I want. It's something that I can compare something to. Because one way or the other, it looks like we're going to have to spend some money for the people who work in, who want the fitness center, or a place to work out. We got to fix what we got.
I think the fitness center gets a lot more attention, or a lot more traffic than everybody thinks. I remember the report that you used to give us, I remember last year when we were talking about budgets, you gave us a monthly report on the activity over there, and it was, considering the size, very impressive.
Yeah, I have a lot of people that tell me they use it, so, but I have nothing to compare that to.
So Kelly was able to pull one number, and what that number says is that access to fitness through golf memberships alone, doesn't include silver sneakers, is 482.
482 individuals? 482 what?
Individuals.
That's golf included, then, right?
Yes.
482 different people, right?
Yes, have access to the golf, I'm sorry, to the fitness center through golf memberships.
How many use it?
That I don't know. I'm just letting you know that-
I assume we can get reports from the scans?
We'll get it. We're going to send you that information. Yes, sir.
All right, that's fine. So again, I think we're in a position where we need to give Ariel direction on what we want her to do next.
Just get the best you can for, I guess he said, $200,000, and then I want to see what it would cost us to-
Right now, the current, from what I've written down, from the discussion that has happened, unless there is a counter that I have, or objection that I have missed, is that the ask right now, or what seems to be somewhat of a consensus, is the entryway and main lobby sponsorship level at $200,000. What we are asking to be included in that is a 20-year payoff term, and them to grant the resident, the discount rate for residents at $30.
And I wouldn't limit it to that. I mean, I would ask for a lot more.
Yeah, I, no, 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 that's not, that's like, my grandmother can negotiate that.
I'll have to get her here.
And she's not with us. You got to go in and tell them, "This is what we're willing to give you. Now what are you willing to give us?" Don't tell them, "We want $27 or $30 a month." Let them tell you what you're going to get for it, and then you can say, you know, if they say 27, you can say, "We were thinking along the lines of 25 or 24," and you give a little, you know, back and forth. Don't tip your hand, seriously, don't tip your hand if you're going to go in there. It's $200,000. Go for it. You know, what are you going to give me for 200 grand?
I will make the ask.
Can we have an informal motion?
This is just, just for you to get your information. We're not committing to anything.
No, we're not committing any funds.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second. Do Ariel pursue the best deal she can make?
A revised proposal?
A revised proposal.
At that, at that-
At that level, $200,000. Any other board comment? A minute?
I would just say that, assuming this is going to go forward, regardless of how much we put into it, putting more money into our facility doesn't necessarily make sense, because I'm not going to use it. I'll use that one.
I think the value of our facility still stays in place, because with the demographic here, we have a lot of residents who are not silver sneaker-eligible, and this facility at $60 a year is still a pretty good deal for those folks. There are just a lot less of them. So, any additional board comment? Public comment? Excuse me, come up here, please. We've asked them to look into the cost of upgrading.
The proposal, yeah, like how this is done, do the same kind of write-up of facilities that can be facilitated?
Yes.
Presented to the public here and to the board, and we also decide on that one as well, before committing to that kind of money.
Yeah, that's, that's part of what we've asked for.
Oh, excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comment? Chrissy?
Supervisor Hotelling?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
President Branson?
Yes. Okay. Petitions in committee, I'm sorry, you had all items?
None.
We did miss something. You didn't finish Paul's.
We didn't finish what?
You didn't finish with Drew, paving projects.
What did we not finish?
That was just, that was provided.
It's not on the agenda. It was just for information.
We have one communication to the board regarding the use of the pickleball facility.
Last year, we had a very similar proposal, if not almost identical to this, through South Central Board of Pickleball. Julie Oblon, I believe, so she was here, she had to leave. She is representing the women's piece of this, the women's play date. So what they're asking, it's a copy and paste of what we approved for them to do last year. It's just got a set of different dates. It's a league, if you will, that goes to different pickleball facilities, and they host, I guess, tournament-style kind of pickleball play, if you will. The other facilities that they attend allow the people on the league, the members on the league, to come in and use the facility at no cost. Last year, we approved this, obviously with the understanding that everyone who came into play was required to sign a Sunland Lake Racket Club waiver to protect us on that level, but I know that last year, this is something that we agreed to, to help promote our facility.
Do you need a motion or?
We're just looking for a consensus from the board for them to use the facility again.
I'm in favor of doing the change.
Awesome. Thank you.
We need a motion, I guess.
No.
No, just consensus is fine.
We don't? Okay. All right, staff reports. I know Mike and Earl have been in the kitchen forever.
Can we put this thing on the next meeting? The paving projects? Tanya? We had the paving projects in the next meeting since we're not discussing it today?
Uh, yes. Did you have some?
So we can have a conversation on it?
Absolutely. I mean, if you, do you want it as a discussion item on the agenda? Is that what you're requesting?
I'd like Drew to tell us what he's doing.
Okay.
Why not?
Well, that's the report of what he is recommending for the budget.
Well, striping work in various locations, repair work in various locations.
No, not that page, on the backside.
Yeah, but doesn't tell you, that only tells you the 291,000.
Correct. That's the roads that we're proposing to go ahead and pave as part of the projects.
Well, I was gonna ask him about the striping work in various locations and the repair work in various locations.
We always have striping and repair work that we need to make sure we have monies in our budget for, you know, at the end of the year, so.
So it's not really assigned, it's just?
It's not assigned, correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Fair enough.
Mike? Good morning. Managers' report for golf. Some things I was asked to bring to the board was membership update. So current fiscal year, this year, our total membership number is right around 330 memberships. Reason why I say around is because it changes daily. We are adding new members or there's more members that are back to sign up on a daily basis. The 50% off membership stands at 33, so that program is doing well. The free membership campaign that is scheduled to end here at the end of the year, there is currently 17 active free memberships that will expire as they move on. There has been 68 total free memberships since January of '17. 22 of those have converted to memberships. 29 have not renewed or converted, and then that leaves us with the 17 that are still active. Current year-to-date dollar amount for memberships is at $1,018,000 and change compared to last year, year-to-date was at just shy of $900,000. So that difference is about $118,000 increase year-over-year, which is about 12%.
So you've already made plans, right?
That, the plan was $1,000,000 even, so, yes. I would have to believe.
That doesn't mean to stop.
No, and I would believe, you know, there's still quite a few people that'll be down in January, which a lot of those folks will be three- and five-month members when they get here. But our membership incentive programs, the free membership and the 50% off, I believe, played a part in that as growing the membership. Some other interesting things to note, we've upgraded 75 memberships, which could be anywhere from no membership to membership, or a single to a family, or anything of that nature. 52 of those upgraded memberships, like I said, were actually not members before, so that could be throughout those programs or all of the above altogether. 16 memberships downgraded, which could be, you know, a family going to a single, or an 80-plus membership going to an 85-plus membership, anything that there was a reduction in membership dollars. We are currently sitting on 52 people that have not rejoined since last year for various reasons. Could be plenty of different reasons, health, or maybe they're just not here to rejoin. So with that being said, so 52 people, 52 memberships were not here last year, 52 have not rejoined. So as far as that goes, that is flat, which I'm sure, if you look at the state of the golf industry, that is a big win. Does anybody have any questions on membership at this time?
Did you say how many were Tanglewood on that free membership deal? I don't remember if you said that or not.
That did come up in green committee. I don't know if that, that is not tagged on our membership information. It doesn't say where they, whether they're Tanglewood or non-Tanglewood. But I do know there is... Off the top, I'm ahead of people I know, I can see seven to 10. I'm sure it's more.
The numbers that everything you gave is good. I personally, I would like to have a copy of it so I can, you know, just have it for my records.
Okay.
The last I heard, there was 13 Tanglewood members.
That's the last.
Sounds about right.
And what is your, since, I guess, do we have to decide on the use of the free membership today, since it's the end of the year?
We already did.
It was already decided in the resolution that the end of the cycle on the free membership program is December 31st.
Right, but usually we have a conversation whether we wanna continue with it or not, so.
We had that.
We voted in that discussion to end the free membership and replace it with the 50%.
You mean when we voted six months ago?
Yep.
Yes. That's correct.
So be it.
We agreed to let the free membership last through the year, but it wouldn't be continued thereafter.
Any other questions?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just a couple things on the golf side. Overseas, obviously, we have been talking about, and you guys have got multiple communications on, based on yesterday's weather, we are gonna start tapering down the water. There will be a point, that's probably midweek next week, provided it's dry, that we'll put down a fertilizer, starter fertilizer on all the overseeded areas, so that'll require some extra water on that event. But after that, we'll get it back into normal playing shape and dry it down. There won't be water running, you know, in the afternoons late, so appreciate everybody's understanding during that, but we are coming to the end of the road on that. The asphalt, which is the first part of finishing up the projects with the curbing and things like that, asphalt had to be done first. They are doing that today. They're over at the range this morning prepping, and all those areas will get asphalt today, so provided it does not rain anymore outside. And then we'll get them in as quick as possible to drop in and do the concrete curbing on the back end of that, so we are extremely happy to hopefully get these wound up. The right side of number nine turtle, we've cleared out all that area anticipation of Drew's finishing up for the restroom location. So if you've been out and played turtle, you've noticed we kinda cleaned that area out. The biggest thing that we've had on the golf side, which has been about a year in process, and Drew was a big part of helping us get through it, is the renewal of our deep well permit through Southwest Florida Water Management District. That permit was renewed through the year 2039. In our permit, which I have a copy that I can, Tanya, I can get to Tanya, who can give it to you guys, part of that is, is a big part of our submittal for the application was that we included Alton's report, which kinda highlighted what we plan on doing over the next, you know, term of five to 10 years on irrigation improvements. We detailed out the irrigation improvements that we did this summer with the green surrounds on the air, as well as the pump station upgrades, gave the numbers on efficiency that we gained from doing that. All that went into the renewal, and the verbiage in the renewal is that it's based on our continued stewardship on the water, that we continue to work the problem, that we continue to try to reduce our usage, so. But that was a huge hurdle that I was really nervous about, so I'm happy to report that we are through that. But we do still have work to do, so we'll continue talking about some of that as we look at capital, money over the next, you know, five to 10 years will be a big part of keeping that permit. And then just one note that we will be, we started actually this morning, but a couple years ago, we started a program of danger timing during the season to alleviate some compaction and just keep greens healthy. It really doesn't mean anything other than you'll see the guys out. There will be a morning or two that we try to block golf for a couple hours to give us a head start to get out in front of golf. That'll be mainly for the months of December, January, and February, so that started actually this morning over on turtle, so that's really the only other thing I have.
I've got, I got a tough question for both of you guys. I, Mike, I'm sorry, I have to back up to you. Just give me an update on the trailers in the back of the restaurant. What are our plans?
Currently, for the big shed, the, been working with Mike to increase our storage capacity for all of the kitchen supplies that we need for a daily basis for close access. We're gonna refit that building for security purposes and utilize that. The smaller shed, we are currently using also for storage. I have not set a game plan. I'm not sure what my predecessor's game plan was for that shed. It is useful to us. I would, you know, if we can make it a little more aesthetically pleasing, I would like to keep it. I think if it is a decision to not keep it, I mean, I think we would figure out a place for storage, probably in the larger building, but that is the game plan on those at this time.
Just, I mean, just for the record, it's a shame that 45 days after we opened it, it's too small.
The...
It's not, I mean, it's no reflection on you, obviously, you're not there at the time, but it's a reflection on us. Let me ask you this, or let me, Earl, the front entry, you may have said this and I didn't hear you, I apologize. The front entryway, when exactly is it starting to look like you envisioned it?
As soon as I can get the curbing in. The asphalt had to go in first on areas, the same company's doing asphalt and curbing. So like the range area, the other areas that are included in that curbing project, they could not do till the asphalt goes in. Once the asphalt's in, I'm gonna try to get them here next week, but it has been a struggle that I have detailed to Tanya, as well as, I think, individual board members.
You're gonna put grass down where the tree?
That whole area will be backfilled once the curbing's in. That's the holdup, is we have to get the curbing in, which is gonna be a raised about six inches, then we'll backfill that whole area, flatten it out, and then all that area gets turf, but I can't do it until I get the curbing in. And unfortunately, we have struggled mildly to get a curbing contractor and then get a curbing contractor to actually show up after giving them the go-ahead to do it. So it's just the state of the market where we're at. Construction's booming. This is a small-scale job. The company that we wound up going with is out of Lakeland, but they do, you know, Walmarts and gas stations. They're gonna do the Wawa across the street, so they were willing to come in and do it, but it's been on their schedule. So I have jumped up and down because we've wanted this to be done back in the summer before anybody got back from up north, but it's just, it's where we're at, so.
Okay. I probably am gonna regret this next one. Where's the bathroom going?
I don't know if there's a detail of, I know, Mike, you might be better to answer this because you've written people out and...
Well, I've taken three of yous out there and showed you yesterday where originally it was supposed to be real close to the green, and after meeting, Tanya and I, and during our meetings, we all talked about it. So we went to Drew and said, is there a better place that won't be in the middle or so close to the green? So what Drew did is he come up with a new plan, and it's right by the metal shed that we have there now, and I showed you yesterday.
Is it where the shed is or?
It's where the shed is, yes.
So the shed's coming out?
Well, right next to it. You and I talked about, you wanted to take it down. I mean, I think that's gonna be a board, board decision, not ours. I mean, yes, it can go there. It'll be right in the middle of 10 and 18, but it won't be in play at all, so that's kinda why we wanted to move it back there. We can get permits and stuff real quick. We can get going on it a lot quicker than anywhere else, so. But we felt the original one was way too close to the green and the bunker, so that's why we ended up where we are.
Well, I know, I know we voted on where it's going, and I know how the vote went, but I just want you guys to think for a minute, and if you still wanna do it your way, that's fine. Where we wandered, where I wandered initially, which is a scrub jay, you'd have it in or whatever the hell it is, which is where all of us decided, which made it easy when you came in off the first tee in turtle, that's where the bathroom was gonna be, which made a lot of sense to everybody. We didn't do it because of the scrub jays, because it would've taken too long to get permission or get the... permission or get the land worked out to where...
Or maybe not get permission. I mean, it wasn't just a hour or a year and a half wait, it was, maybe I wouldn't even get it.
But it is 60, my, my point is, and then I'll let it go, it is $60,000. Why put it in the wrong place? I'd rather wait a year, get permission, do it, and put it in the right place. But...
Well, to me, my only issue is, and I think it's in the right place. I mean, that's a matter of opinion and you didn't move it too far. But I ask all of you, whether you're golf or whether you're Sunon Lake, when we, the board, asked for opinion and we were told that's the only place we could put it, and then after we vote behind our backs, really, it was decided that maybe we're gonna move it, that's not acceptable. So I think we just better make, better, better plans ahead of time because I don't wanna vote for something. I mean, I rely on you, you guys for stuff. And we were told that's the only place we could put it. The majority of us wanted ahead of it built quickly. So that's, that's the four of us prerogative. And then, then I hear we're gonna move it, but it's not gonna be moved too many feet. So it's, and I just want it built and get it done because the people want it. But I, I ask you all, if I ask you where we can put it, I don't want any, I mean, I don't think all of us liked exactly where we were gonna put it to begin with, but we were told that's the only place we could do it and do it now. So that's all I ask is, you know, maybe work a little harder because we seem to find a different place after, after the four of us voted to put it there. So that's all I ask.
All right.
Supervisor Hotelling, if you'd like to go out and have Mike...
I've seen the drawing. Mike showed me the drawing.
Okay, it's about 10 feet. Okay. The shelter does not have to come down based on what I've been told, is that correct?
Right, right. It doesn't have to be pinned.
Are they taking that down? Would be a mistake.
Does not have to come down.
Yeah, good. So we need a motion to put it down location? I mean, does it need formal improvement?
The bathroom's gonna go to the side of the, of the shed?
Yes.
Do you need a motion from me? I shall move.
Second.
Additional board comment? Any public comment? Chrissy?
Supervisor Brooks?
No.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hotelling?
Yes.
President Branson?
Yes. Okay. I got Mike, Earl. Anything else? Okay. Continue with staff reports.
I have a few updates for you guys. Next week, next Friday, we will be having the Assessment Appeal Committee meeting here at the community center at 9:00 AM. We had two property owners with two individual lots of four total appeals that we'll be considering. So we'll be bringing that back to the board in January with our recommendations. We've also completed the transition for all of the district employee retirement benefits from ICMA to Nationwide. That's been, the entire process has been complete. All the monies have been moved from ICMA to Nationwide. So it was a pretty seamless transition, so we're happy about that. One of the caveats of going with Nationwide was that we will be getting a quarterly update on changes to the plan, recommendations, funds that need attention. Once again, we're starting now here in December, so our first report won't be until March, but we're gonna continue to keep the board up to date if any recommendations or changes are made to the plan, just to keep you guys informed of how we're staying on top of the retirement plan.
I also wanted to bring your question on that.
Go ahead.
I know Supervisor Stiegel was on that committee. Do you need a board representative on that?
My recommendation on that is we're probably gonna assign someone towards the end of next year. My intention with the retirement committee is for a once-a-year review, all the changes, planned participation, just discuss the retirement plan itself and how we're handling things to see if there's any changes or recommendations. So I will be asking for a new appointment to that committee and then we'll still have a once-a-year meeting on the retirement plan. And then at that point, we can decide whether we wanna keep our contributions the same, change them, just have an overall encompassing meeting on the retirement plan itself. I don't think we need to meet quarterly. I don't, I don't foresee a lot of changes on a quarterly basis. So we'll kinda earmark it this first year and then we can do it from there. My next update is on a couple properties on Mendavia. So the majority of around Turtle Run, everything's pretty much developed. On Mendavia, there's a loop and there's about two properties that are owned by the district and they're currently classified as recreation and land use. We, the district, have reviewed them. We really don't have any drainage intention for them. We feel like it could be an asset to the, to the district. So our intention is to mitigate those lands with some lands that we have out in units 20 and 21 that are owned by the state, lift the conservation off of that, get them rezoned and put them up for sale so they can be developed on the golf course. Here's just some aerial footage. So these are in between coming down off of, I believe that's hole nine on the left and that is, not sure on the right, if that's six or eight?
Seven.
So, right now, it's two really large parcels that we own.
You look at it.
And we've done just a rough sketch here. You can see how the property repairer has them strapped, two big straps. It has a cul-de-sac that's currently platted. More than likely, we'll eliminate, eliminate the covert or the cul-de-sac and just plaid them into individual straps so they match all the neighboring lots. Here's kinda just a quick depiction of what we think it may, may look like. So if you have any questions on that, just let us know, but we think it'll be a nice, I think there'll be pretty large lots too, and so I think we can get some pretty good revenue and get some development on those lots. So it's a win-win for us. Last is, we just went through our auditors. We're here for our annual audit, so I wanna give you guys a presentation on how we finished September 30th. I know you guys have approved the September financials, but I just wanted to go through a year-end update and just go through it and see if you guys have any questions regarding performance in comparison to budget and last year's performance. So I wanna start with the golf fund. We'll start off with the golf fund and their revenues. Overall, this year, at September 30th, the golf fund collected a total of $2.4 million. This was a $73,000 increase over last year and exceeded the overall budget expectation. Cost of sales increased as well, $15,000, causing the gross margin to be, I mean, one second, 2.1 million, which was also a $57,000 increase over last year. So golf operations trending higher in revenues. Next page is expenses. Overall expenses stayed relatively the same, over just over $2 million. There was only a $3,000 change year-to-year from last year to this year. There were some major fluctuations in payroll benefits and golf course maintenance, but overall for the golf operations, it stayed relatively similar. The overall net operating income for just the golf operations was $134,000 in comparison to last year's $73,000. So they made an improvement of $61,000 in golf operations year-over-year. So that's a pretty good, pretty good sign on the golf operations. We move on to the F and B portion. Overall, F and B revenues decreased $133,000. We were expecting that decrease with the restaurant closure. Overall gross margin did go down as a result of that by $90,000. Overall net operating loss for the F and B portion totaled $370,000 deficit in comparison to last year's $270,000 deficit. So we lost an additional $98,000 in the F and B operation side of the operation.
Can you clarify on this screen why we missed so badly on budget for food and beverage? It looks like we just budgeted way too low based on past experience.
For the revenues...
The food and beverage line under operating expenses, the budget was $25,000 and the year-to-date was $131,000.
They were planning on keeping the restaurant open, but it got closed. That's some of it.
Well, that, our expense is higher than budget.
Yeah, but I'm saying they stopped, they stopped selling, but they didn't necessarily eliminate the expense that they had.
Yeah, that's, that's something we need to look at from a budget standpoint because year-over-year, it's saved, obviously, there was less spending year-over-year, $148,000 the year before. We only spent $131,000, but the budget seems like there's a big discrepancy there. So I need to look in that and see, maybe there was new classifications or items that they purchased as far as glassware, plates that they weren't expecting, but I need to look into that and maybe there's a difference in the budgeting process.
Let me know on that one.
Will do. Overall, for the golf fund, so when you, you take into consideration the golf operations and the F and B, it was a total deficit loss of $235,000. The district subsidized 225 of that and then we also received the FEMA proceeds for the other $47,000, which rounds out the golf operations. Next is the general fund. Going over, you know, I think one of the biggest highlights is the assessment revenue. So last year, we collected a total of $3.4 million in assessments. This last year, we collected three point, just a little bit over 3.2, so it was $150,000 deficit. Once again, we were expecting that because of GIA's assessment consulting recommendations and changes we made on that. So that was felt right in line with, with what we were projecting. Overall total revenues collected, $3.8 million, which was about $98,000 less than last year. Majority of that was a result of FEMA reimbursements. So last year, we got a pretty good chunk of FEMA reimbursements and then this last year, we got the remaining portions that were left carryover.
Is this where you want me to tell you that you did a great job with your investment earnings?
So yeah, we, we have done better investment earnings. The economy was doing better as far as interest rates, but we'll see how it's, it'll go going forward, but luckily that, that helped offset some of the other ones.
He gave me five bucks to say that.
So total expenditures for this last year, $3.3 million. And then total revenue over expenses was $500,000, which was, once again, the $90,000 less than last year across the board. As I mentioned, the $272,000 ties back to what we transferred to the golf fund. We spent $556,000 in golf capital last year and then we spent $731,000 to the clubhouse renovation project and then we carried forward the difference of the 1.2 million in projects. So total operations for golf in general fund caused a total net deficit of a mil, just over a million dollars for golf in general fund. Any questions? I wanted to highlight just a couple. I know sometimes, you know, we get projects done and then we forget later on what we actually accomplished. So here's just some of the highlights of some of the capital improvements that we, we made last year. You know, we did add the new $10,000 worth of gym, gym equipment. We did do the paving projects on Pebble, Myrtle Beach. We did some severe drainage work on Sunrise. Columbus Boulevard was a big project that we, we pushed over a couple of years and got that done. We changed the, we repaired the structure out back for drainage purposes. Deer Run Greens irrigation got complete. We did the new golf equipment lease, which was a big improvement. You know, that, that took some time. We got the new driving range mat and then we were about 65% complete as far as the kitchen project. Here's some picture, I've attached some pictures and here's some of the picture of some of the drainage work by the guys in the paving that was accomplished, so. Lastly, we'll go over our utility fund.
Before you, before you leave the general fund, the question I had, because we got 65% completion on the clubhouse project, does that mean that the $731,000 on the clubhouse project actually will go up before we're done or is that included?
No, that, as of September 30th, that was the money that we spent towards that project. The remaining $426,000 will be spent in this fiscal year period.
Carryover.
As, as the carryover in the budget amendment. So as far as the utility fund, total revenues last year were just shy of 2.5 million. It was about a $72,000 increase from last year. That did not include any rate increases. It's just more development, more water charges, sewer charges. So this year, you'll start to see another increase as a result of the, the rate increase that we implemented. Total expenses increased as well, $600,000 over last year and a lot of that is a result of a lot of capital projects that we performed inside, within the utility fund. Overall net income for the utility fund as a whole was a profit of $363,000 in comparison to last year's $896,000 net income, so. Once again, we did get a lot of major capital projects done, the biggest one being the water plant electrical upgrades that were performed. We spent about $315,000 on that project alone. And then here are some of the other projects as well that, that we got accomplished last year within the utility fund and still made that net profit of $360,000. I've also provided some pictures. You can see here, this is the ceiling project. You can see how it looked before up top and then how, you know, the lining, how that sealed up the cracks on the bottom. And then here's just the manhole replacement, which was a pretty big job to dig out that manhole, the VFD's at the water plant and then the new chlorine system that's at the water plant as well as part of all those upgrades. So lastly, I just wanna go over our reserve projections, what we were projecting during the budget process. We had a net projection overall loss of about $900,000, what we were projecting to lose as a result. We ended up doing a little bit better than that. Overall deficit was just about $700,000. The majority of that was a result of, you know, we carried over some of the project that we were expecting to, to get accomplished last year. We carried over the front entrance landscaping. We can't, carried over Orion Drive. We carried over Pro Pump. We also received about $40,000 in FEMA, so overall, it helped last year's deficit for about $200,000 based on our projections. Here's our reserve balances. So we began the year at eight, just about $8.6 million in reserves available. Once again, we had a deficit of $1 million in general fund and then an increase of 360 in utility. So that brought our available reserves as of September to just around $8 million is where we stand now. And here's the total breakdown of how those reserves are accounted for. Do we have any questions as far as reserves or performance, financials?
Yeah, assuming everything holds, according to the numbers, the available reserves at the end of this fiscal year will be somewhere around $700,000, uh, $7 million, I'm sorry. Is that correct?
So currently, when we finished the budget process for this upcoming year, we had budgeted a deficit of $218,000 is where we left the budget. Then we did a budget amendment to carry over the $426,000 for the clubhouse project, Orion Drive. All those projects are budgeted deficit now for this current year is up to $900,000 is where we stand with our current budget. So that would bring that 7.9 million down to 7 million if we hit budget exact, exactly, correct.
And that, as far as revenues, includes the increase that we passed on, on the utilities?
Yes, all the new water and sewer charges.
Even with that additional money, we're still gonna...
Right now, we're budgeted to be in a deficit of $900,000 budget-wise. That's all I got.
Thank you.
I've got, we had 536 watch orders last month, 62 security complaints and 144 code enforcement warnings. That's what we gave out and I gave you my reports on everything else. The watch orders are starting to come down because everybody's getting back. We, we have had some, some packages taking off people's porches over the last couple of weeks. So I alerted all the, the facility guys that work in the facility and security to keep their eyes open if they see anything or anyone else. I also have security working a few more hours during the day now because obviously, when UPS drops the, UPS and FedEx drops them off. So we've had, I, I think, three or four different incidents already. So, but we had the same thing last year, so we just try to alert everybody. And I let security know if anyone has a, has a problem to call security and, and if they're not gonna be home, they can drop it off at the security office if, if they need it right away, so. Good?
Just one quick update for me. You may or may not have already seen that the new pool furniture has been put in over at the pool. That was a capital item for recreation this year. So we have gotten those ordered and they're over there, they look really nice. We've gotten a lot of compliments on the new furniture, so just wanted to give you an update there.
Can you tell me when we'll get our first update on the marketing plan?
Yes, that should be coming actually very soon. I was speaking with Susan quite a bit, it was either yesterday or the day before, and they're working on putting together that first...
Whatever's happened. Have you gotten any phone calls?
Inquiries, no, not yet.
You'll hate this part. The website is still nowhere to be found when you put, when you inquire about Sunland.
So I did get an update on that, let me, I can pull it up.
If we're gonna wait for hits, it's gonna be a long time.
It has to do with the search engine optimization, that take, that just takes a little bit for basically the internet to prove that it's, it is what you say it is and it's not...
I went through third, I went through three pages, you know, on Google, and I, and I didn't get to it, so I gave up. But I mean, it's just not, and we need it to be on page one, number one. Can the marketing company help us at all?
I can...
Can you forward the email that I sent you about SEO?
Susan, Susan sent me, I asked her that question November 18th. She responded back to me talking about SEO basically and how to enhance SEO, so I can forward you that email.
I mean, you've built a nice website, but nobody knows it's there.
Right.
Okay.
Is it a matter of cost?
Let me see, she says, "Since this is such a new website, it will take several weeks for the, for Google spiders to crawl out the site and learn how to categorize it. The method they use and when this will happen is unknown. The more links in and out of the site help to move this process along because Google will see that there is a lot of traffic. The good news is that the platform that the site is built on is automatically enhanced with SEO tools, so once it's scanned, it will do the hard work for us," are her exact words to me.
Okay, every hour on the hour, I want you to do an inquiry.
I'll add that, I will add that to the list.
Apparently, if that's, if that's sad, if that's the only way, he would, I mean, I think we'd be willing to pay a little bit of money to get it up on top if that's what it takes.
I don't necessarily think this is a matter of money, I think this is just Google and the way that the process has to go through.
Check with Susan on that, because I think there are some ways to spend money to improve your optimization.
I sure will. So one of the things she did say is that the platform in which they built this on is automatically programmed to enhance it at every opportunity that it gets, but I'll ask her if there's, if there is a spend or if there's maybe another program that helps juice up even the program that they have.
General Counselor's report.
Okay, the DFC sale on December 4th, when it's planned, the district received the property for a hundred dollar plaintiff's bid. There is a 10-day window where anyone can object to the sale. If no objections entered after the 10 days, then the certificate of title is issued by the county. So that should...
10 calendar days or 10 business days?
10 calendar days, so that's, well, yeah, which is Saturday, which means that most likely it'll be Monday that they will wait until, see if any objections are filed, so the, in my opinion, the latest it should be is Tuesday where the, the, the deal will be entered and it'll officially be the district's property. I had a meeting with the county attorney and we went over some of the issues that we've been talking about with the moving to five popular elected seats and the method of, of filling vacancies. At the time, I had, the research that I had basically was boiled down to the, a lot of the information was regarding when we went from three landowner seats and two popular elected to, to landowner and three popular elected. Since that time, I've got additional information about when we transitioned to one acre, one vote, or one lot, one vote, or one dollar, one vote, which is the system that we're under now. And at the August 24th, 2012 meeting, when that was being, coming before the board, where we were transitioning to one dollar, one vote, Mr. McClure had given some opinions, and I think it's very helpful. I've already dropped this information off to the county attorney for her to review, but I want to read some of it into the, to you guys is what was stated. There was a question of whether or not the one dollar, one vote was, you know, allowable under 189 and 298. Mr. McClure opined at that time, said, "First of all, there is no requirement to comply with 298. Mr. Coste and I have reviewed and researched that. When we were subject to 189.4051, that's when we had landowner elections based on land ownership per acre. 189.4051 specifically states it is only for supervisor elections of one acre, one vote basis. Once we changed to the one dollar, one vote methodology based on our assessment-tiered assessment scheme, that, then that went out the window. The only reference you will find to 298 is going to be under 189.4051. I can see no requirement whatsoever that 298 is tied to our election scheme, and this is the most important statement. It is my opinion that our election scheme is 100% controlled by the Board of County Commissioners. They have addressed the election scheme in the last modification to our charter." So that basically says that when we transitioned from, to one dollar, one vote, we went outside the scope of 189 or no longer bound by it. So if the transition to one dollar, one vote was allowable, then there should be no reason that we can't transition to a five popularly elected seat board because we're not bound by 189. And 189 is what ties us to that urbanization requirement. So if we're not tied under 189, we're not tied to that urbanization requirement, we should just be able to go to the county and say this is what we want. At the same time, the, our current way of replacing popularly elected vacancies is a 189, it's, it's our, it's part of our charter, a part of the ordinances that define us, but it is a, it's a word-for-word copy from a 189 statute. And so, once again, if we're not bound by 189, we should be able to transition that to exactly what was previously proposed and the county had a problem with, because their problem was that it didn't mirror the state statute, it went outside the state statute. And if we're not bound by that statute, then we should be able to transition it to what we want. So like I said, I've given this information to the county attorney and I'll probably try and get in another meeting with her, hopefully before the next board meeting on January 10th.
The county commissioners still have to vote on it, though, either way.
Correct, correct. But hopefully this is going to relieve her of any of the concerns that she had previously because if it was okay to do this, then it's okay to do what we're proposing, in my opinion.
So you're gonna meet with her to make sure she's on board, so when she goes to the next their board meeting, she can say my recommendation is to do this?
Correct, correct. That's what we're hoping is gonna happen.
Good.
The Louis Longman Walker letter that was promised on August 31st came yesterday afternoon, so we have it. Tanya and I, I briefly reviewed it. It looks like it, it, it says what we were hoping it would say. But I'm gonna meet with Tanya, we're gonna put together a letter. I'm already required to put together a letter by January 15th to send to the auditors about all the litigation and stuff that occurred in the past fiscal year. So what I'm going to try to do is have a, come to you guys on the January 10th meeting with our, our ask to the auditors that they remove the $10 million liability line based on this opinion letter, so.
I have copies for you here, Chrissy has them.
And that's all I've got unless there's questions.
General Counsel's report.
Good afternoon, Supervisors, I'll be brief. Just a quick update on the landowners' seats. We have two individuals that have qualified, one for Mr. Gilpin's seat, which is Mr. Gilpin, and the second, Mr. Herrick, has qualified for Dan Siegel's seat. As of today, we do not have an election, and that's, that's the update I have. The last day to qualify is December 23rd, which is a Monday.
I hate to ask this, are we prepared in case there is more than one person running for a seat to do whatever we have to do to...
Have an election.
Have an election.
Absolutely, we've already, we've already started the process. Chrissy and I have met multiple times. I have consulted with Penny Og and I expect several more conversations before that time. Yes, sir.
You're comfortable, because my understanding is, off the record, I mean, I don't know anything officially, but there might be more than one other person still interested in getting into the race, so to speak, which would mean a...
Which would mean an election.
An election would have to take place, so. Okay, you feel good about it?
As good as I can be.
And probably what's...
This hasn't happened in a long time.
What's most expected, it'd be at the last day. They won't, they won't want to show their hand until the last possible day.
Until the 23rd. I've received three quotes for the blinds of the clubhouse, just to let you know. These blinds are very similar to the blinds that are in the banquet area, so we're, about $7,200 cost, that's within my...
73, 77?
Seven, somewhere in that range, so we're moving forward with that.
That's cheaper than the last one.
The shuffleboard courts, we are finalizing the design and the, or the bid specs, excuse me, for the shuffleboard for the recreation facility, so we expect that to be put out for bid in early January, and construction definitely this summer.
Do we have an update on the progress you've had collecting, putting the assessments together with the county taxes for next year? Is that right? Is there an update?
Oh, from, from Eric Sawyer?
Huh?
From Mr. Sawyer.
Yeah.
I don't have any other updates other than the conversation that we had with him last month.
I mean, is it still our intention to try and put them all together?
I, can I, I don't really have an update. The biggest part of this is the cost analysis. What is it gonna cost us to move in this direction and is it worth it to do so? We're still, we're still reviewing that internally.
I guess my question, though, is, are we still gonna try and find out, or...
We're, we're still looking at the costs of what it's gonna cost us to actually move in that direction and is it gonna be worth it? I'll let you know. I think by the next meeting, we should, we're gonna have a, we'll have a feel by January That's all. Thank you.
300,000 Spanish?
None.
New Spanish?
None.
Community reports?
None.
I'll also be brief. David, a lot of times I don't like what you had to say, but I loved what you had to say about this transition to five popular seats. It looks like it might be as simple as we thought and clean up this thing and maybe get back to some, the democratic way of doing things. So my understanding is, right now, we're not bound by 189 as far as that's concerned. Five popular seats, if we put together a reasonable schedule to transition this thing and petition the county, then it's in the county's hands to do whatever we ask them to do. Okay, guys?
And they said they'd do it, what we asked.
Okay, okay, let's, let's, let's see if we can get it done and stop a lot of argument and a lot of bickering and who's gonna qualify, who's not gonna qualify type thing, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Additional public comment? This guy's a tooth from the board.
Yeah, I got something I want to bring up. I think we have to, there's been several occurrences over the last, I don't know, year, year and a half, over the conduct of certain members. I think we got to establish, the board should establish, or somebody should establish a policy on if somebody misbehaves who's a member, what actions will be taken as a disciplinary measure. Because right now, we're not very consistent, and I think that could lead to a lot of problems.
So what do you suggest?
I'd write the house down with that one. Well, I, I'm just saying, I think we have to say if somebody, if certain things happen that are not in the best interest of Sunland, the following action would be taken. I'm not, I'm trying not to get into specifics, but...
So something like a, you know, a policy, adopting a policy that says that, you know, I don't know if it's a three-tiered or four-tiered or whatever type, I mean, it would be for the board to decide, but so there's clearly defined...
Yeah, I just want, I mean, there's been, there's been a couple of instances in the last couple of weeks, and they were treated differently. And I just think that could lead to a problem. And I think we have to, you know, get something down so that everybody knows if something happens, this will be the action taken.
Yeah, and I, I think the policy needs to include not only actions to members, but actions to non-members who abuse.
I agree with that 100%. I think that's the right thing to do.
And I know every situation will be different and will need to be looked at individually, but it would be similar to what we have in our employee code of conduct. And based on what the infraction is, there's a certain tier level. You know, that's, that's what we have for our employees.
Maybe we review that at the next meeting and if it's, I mean, I don't, I'm not familiar with the wordage, if it's spelled out well, we'll go with that, or maybe we adopt.
Yeah, if we can... We'll put together a proposal for the next...
And that would be for the district policy manual that we would, of course, adopt as an amendment to our manual, of course. Yeah, we can put something together.
I mean, I think we should. You guys agree with that?
Yes.
That's all I have.
Yep. The one thing I would have is, now that we own unit 12 for the majority of it, we need to put together a plan as to what we're gonna do with it. So the quicker you can put something in front of us, that would be very helpful.
I agree. So we're, we've already reached out to world design marketing about the property. My other thoughts, Henry Delozer comes to mind, and him and I should have a conversation. We've had conversations with the county and internally, so we're gonna be meeting next week internally just to, you know, talk, where do we start? Talk about publications that are available to us and what those costs are.
Okay.
Meeting adjourned.